Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting for order. We'll call please Mrs. Damon.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Here. Dr. Wildley.
Here.
Mr. Smith. Mrs. Kunkel.
Here.
Mr. Canwisher.
Here.
Mr. Ayers.
Here.
Mrs. Brock. Here. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I'll take a motion.
The agenda is presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Canwisher, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Vision statement: It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state. Not in some things, but in everything. Not for some students, but for every student. Welcome to our guests this evening. Now would be the opportunity to address the board on any non-agenda items. Alright, seeing none, I will go around the board table, and I will start with Mrs. Zen. Anything this evening?
Uh-uh.
This evening. Ms. McEwen?
I have two really quick things.
Okay.
Um, we had, last week, I didn't say anything because I forgot the number.
You have fourteen open, fourteen elementary teams.
So I think Bernie had mentioned the secondary and
Yes.
fourteen elementary, which is really awesome. And then, I also wanted to just share that the Wellness Committee will be meeting next week on October thirtieth at four o'clock. And there are many stakeholders that are a part of that committee. Teachers, school nurses, counselors, community members, school board member, um, that are really looking at. File one seventy-five. There will be, there will not be decisions made that night, but we will be starting to have conversations about it.
Mrs. Brock's here, anything?
You guys switched places.
We did, we're throwing you off.
Messing me up.
Um, couple of updates. So congratulations to our cross-country teams, both who swept the MAC. So congratulations to both boys and girls. It was actually the fifteenth consecutive MAC championship for the boys' cross-country team. So keeping that streak going. Um, I also wanted to extend congratulations to our PV High School cheer team. Um, they recently took the squad to the Iowa All-State Cheerleading Squad tryouts. And we had five cheerleaders selected to join the squad, which was only composed of twenty-five cheerleaders from all across the state. So many congrats to the five who made the team. And then they've also done very well with some of their recent competitions. And then, last but not least, this evening, I wanted to recognize our students who are advancing in the Iowa Auto Dealers High School Automotive Skills Contest. Um, so, Mr. Stutenberg was here last year, talked a little bit about this. But this is actually their student, um, oh, it's a CTSO, Student Technic, Career and Technical Student Organization. Um, this is their affiliation. Um, so on Tuesday, they took nine of our junior and senior students to participate in the competition, and round one is a written exam. And of those, um, so it's a one-hundred-question test, and the students have sixty minutes to complete it. And it assesses students' knowledge with the eight industry standards for the ASE certification. And, um, so, let's see. The top eight scoring districts across the state get invited back, and we are pleased to announce that we were one of those districts. So, congrats to those students.
Thank you. Ms. Kenyon, anything this evening?
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Director Canwisher?
Not tonight.
Director Wildley? Alright. Director Wheeler?
Nothing tonight.
Oh, you guys are quiet tonight. Director Ayers?
I have nothing, thank you.
Director Kunkel?
I'm good, thank you very much.
Mrs. Damon?
Yes, there's an updated personnel agenda, as well as an updated entire course.
Okay.
Google file.
Alright, thank you for that. And then, Mr. Struse?
Just a reminder that Mike Kleinsworth is out today because he is at the National, um, Conference of National Defense.
Alright.
Back at the end of the week.
Well, hopefully, he's having a good time.
He's down there, I know. He arrived.
Where is he at again?
Nashville.
Nashville, yeah.
Alright.
That's what always is?
I think it rotates.
Alright, we will move on. Sorry. Okay, on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions regarding this evening's consent agenda? It includes minutes, as well as personnel. Uh, if not, I'll take a motion.
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler, that tonight's consent agenda is approved as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Alright, moving on to, uh, new business this evening. We will start with our superintendent search firm interviews. And, uh, leading us off here tonight is Grunmeyer Leader Services. Uh, as we communicated, uh, we'll go ahead and visit with you for about an hour. Um, you have fifteen minutes to, uh, give your, uh, clock, and then we'd like to have some time after that for the balance of that to ask some questions. So, am I missing anything, Leanne, there? Okay. Alright, so, welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Almost built into ourselves to everybody, so it's great to be here. Nice to meet you. Um, I heard very few questions earlier, so I'm assuming you're saving those for us. Fantastic. Um, I also want to recognize your cross-country team too, because my kids ran against your kid. See, nothing has changed. I'm, we'll do a quick introductions, um, to kind of make sure you know a little bit about us. Make sure I get the clicker going in the right direction. There we go. I'm Shannon Bisgaard. This is my third year working for Grunmeyer Leader Services. Before that, I'm a lifelong Iowan, grew up in north-central Iowa, teacher, principal, superintendent. I was smart enough, foolish enough to follow his footsteps, I guess, um, throughout Iowa, and I was a teacher, principal, superintendent as well. Um, I was in Newton, Iowa, Independence, Iowa, and then, most of my career, um, I finished up with Grantwood AEA, and then, twenty years at Limar. Uh, Limar, a lot of similarities to PV, size, suburban school, growing school, um, always kind of admired your district from afar, and I'll say I've stolen your website before, um, when we were going through that. So, retired three years ago, um, from that position. So I understand that challenge that you're going through now, and Brian's internal struggles to make that decision, it's a big decision. Um, and I've, since then, I've been working for Trent and Grunmeyer Leader Services. Really, really enjoy the opportunity to do this. Primarily do schools, work with schools in eastern Iowa, um, from the smallest schools to bigger schools. Uh, really enjoy the chance to work with school boards and stay connected with our leaders across the state. Um, I just know the value of having a quality leader, and it's fun to be able to continue to do that work, too, so. Other than that, I'm a, um, my wife and I have lived in Cedar Rapids, Marion area now, for twenty-five years almost. We have three kids. Uh, my oldest, um, is in Duane area, he's in the finance world, and he and his wife provided us our first grandchild two and a half years ago, so that might have something to do with my retirement timing. Our second child, Lauren, um, is a teacher here in the Quad Cities, actually. She's at Rock Island. Would love to see her come this direction, but she loves the school she's at, so, um, can't go wrong with that. As well, and they provided us with our first granddaughter just six months ago, so I'm enjoying retirement life with them. And then our youngest is a, um, a nurse in Chicago, Larry. So, um, and well, John, give you a little introduction for yourself.
Glad to be here, I'm John Spear. I actually ended my thirty-one-year K-12 career June thirtieth, so I'm a new retiree, Brian, so I know what you're going through. I talked to Brian earlier July first, when you wake up and you don't check your work email, it kind of makes the decision real. So, much like Shannon, I'm a lifelong Iowan, I'm a teacher, coach, uh, principal, superintendent. My last two positions were, I mean, college community, I was a superintendent, you might know it as Prairie. We competed with you periodically, so. Uh, very similar district in, in size and growth, and so I think we understand some of the things you're going through as a district. My last position, I was the chief administrator at Grantwood AEA, and I actually served, I think, the spring of twenty-four as the interim chief at Mississippi Bend, uh, as I transitioned to Shane. Um, so I was happy to do that. Um, um, lifelong Iowans, my, my wife, actually, is Illinois, in Geneseo, Illinois. Probably gonna know that well, and we're Frank's pizza people, not Harris. Either the one or the other, I think, in your life. Um, life is a lifelong educator. I have two daughters, my oldest daughter graduated from Iowa. This spring, my youngest daughter is a freshman at Utah State. Seventeen-half hour drive is a little unsettling for mothers, I've learned over the last few months. You know, I think when you retire, I don't know if you're ever ready, but you still want to make a difference in education. And, uh, Shannon and I have been friends and worked and been around each other for a long time, and I thought this was the way I could still impact and affect K-12 education in Iowa. So I obviously have been working with Grunmeyer since, uh, July one. Happy to be here, and, uh, if we get the search, we'd do nothing but giving you the right candidate.
We know we have only fifteen minutes to share with you, but we think it's important that you know a little bit about us. We're very much relationship people. Educated and hard people, connectors, so we'll take the time to do that as well, so. Um, and we'll look forward again to know you over the course of the next fifty-five minutes, and hopefully beyond that, too, so. Um, the slide out in front of you, and you do have copies of this in your folder, um, as well. I think you have a couple. Likely, because, copies, land-made copies.
Yes.
Can't see things, but I'm showing you this picture, so John and I are the two that are here representing us tonight, and we will be your lead consultants. We always work in teams of two. Um, I will be your lead contact person, just to make sure our communication stays streamlined, whoever your district contact person may be. We'll coordinate everything together, but behind the scenes, there's a whole team we'll be working with. Um, I'll highlight three people up there, or four people, actually. Um, I'll skip Trent, my boss, that's a bad idea. First in the green, Trent Grunmeyer, he's the owner and founder of Grunmeyer Leader Services. He works with every search, he knows everybody. Um, he's a great connector for us. He'll be working behind the scenes through the entire process. And then the three folks in the bottom right-hand corner, Aaron, Amanda, and Kristen, um, they help us through all of the, the research and paperwork and all the data stuff we do behind the scenes. They do everything to help us make look good, and they do a lot of communications as well, too. So you may see some other names from time to time, want to make sure you recognize who those individuals are. Going backwards. Uh, the search process itself, we view ourselves, every time I tell somebody what I do, they always say, "Oh, you're a headhunter." Say, "Well, that's not what we are." Uh, we really view ourselves as we provide, do the support at the school board from the beginning of the process, once that retirement or change is made, all the way through to onboarding and beyond. Uh, we work for you, so the process we propose to you is here, we can be flexible and adjust things. Uh, but we really view it as, we will work with you to do as much recruiting as possible, avoid the position as possible, identifying the right fit, leading you through the interview process, helping you make that decision, knowing full well it is your decision to make who you bring in and who you hire. And then we start to work on the onboarding piece as well, too. So, we try and watch at every step of the process, you're busy people in your lives. Uh, so we try to do a lot of the busy work, because the hiring process is critical. Um, as administrators, we know that from those hiring decisions, and nothing's more important than hiring a great superintendent. Uh, so we try to take that work off of your plate, so you can just focus on which candidate's the right fit for your district.
You know, we also understand in your situation, to be the first search you've done in sixty-two years, so finding the right person will be, I think, tantamount in, in this process for you.
We try to help do the dirty work, you can really find that, we know a little bit about your district as outsiders, you know what you really need. We try to let you focus on that instead of the details. We'll touch base on each of these throughout the night. If you run out of time in fifteen minutes, I'm sure we'll come back to it in your questions as well. It's kind of the flow chart. To write it down, the very first steps, if we get the honor to work with you, the first thing we would do is schedule a follow-up meeting, that we would both come back, um, as soon as possible, and we'll start to work with you on every step of this process. Let's get a timeline identified. Uh, what are the key pieces? We would like to do a survey of your community, just start to really dig into the details. What do you want to pay for a salary range, and really get that organized, that planning meeting, essentially, is our walking orders from you about what to do. And then we would also spend more time with you in that meeting, going through, here's what the process will look like from beginning to end. So if you get questions from the community, you can feel like you're entering them in a knowledgeable, comfortable way, too. Um, the other board meetings on there, really more with the hiring process at the end of it, but those are the times we would be together as a full group. The planning one being the first one. We have a proposed hiring timeline, I think it's a little bit different than what you had proposed, um, initially, or some conversations we had heard about. But we can be very flexible. Again, this is what we think is realistic, um, and also to try to capture the biggest pool we can, um, and the best pool of candidates that we can. I think your timing is perfect, you're not too early. We're dealing with a couple of schools early this fall, that candidates aren't looking for jobs in September and October. They will be when we get to November and December, but you don't want to be too late in the hiring process and lose good candidates either. We think you're in a really sweet spot for that. Uh, so what we have proposed, and all of this can be adjusted, is if we get the work, we'd love to come back. Said next week, we could go back tomorrow. Um, I, John Canty's gone tomorrow. Come back as soon as possible, get that planning meeting started, uh, and then we can look at a hiring win, application window and a recruiting window for us, October twenty-first through January fourth. Uh, so as soon as tomorrow, we would get the basics posted, and as we got more information from you, we would put in more details in that as well, but we'd start recruiting and posting information right away. We set January fourth, that's right after the Christmas, New Year's, winter break time, obviously. I think that's a great window to capture candidates. Uh, but we see a lot of applicants will surface for jobs that we have across the state, really in Thanksgiving break and winter break, because they have some downtime. Um, they can step back from their long days, they can start getting applications, they can pull their letters together, so that gives us a good window, um, and still allows us the month of January to really dig into the hiring. So, we would then come back a week later and present all of the candidates to you. You'll see every application, every candidate. Uh, we will give you, I'll talk about this next, kind of a rank order of how we would do that for you, to our suggestions. Suggestions, it's up to you to go from there. And then what we would recommend is that next, next week in January, to do a round of screening interviews. We typically do those via Zoom. We usually do between five and eight candidates via Zoom, thirty minutes a shot, so it's a four-hour night if you go all eight candidates. Uh, but you really get a chance to get to know some candidates more than just on paper. Uh, and at that time, we hope to get down to three finalists to bring back, with three is kind of a sweet spot for us, we think, uh, of people to bring in, to do more of the formal final interviews, more traditional interviews, which we'll dig into as well, too, so.
I think it's important, you talk about the fact that we bring the, the information to you, and we go through it with you, but it's you that picks the candidates. Obviously, part of what you hire us to do is have opinions about the readiness to be superintendent, but in the end, it's your choice of the candidates you bring in for this process, and it should be, it's your district.
And I'll just address the elephant in the room. The Des Moines situation has definitely put a spotlight on boards and search firms like ourselves. We were not anything to do with that search, first of all, just to be clear, which I'm sure you're aware of. Um, and I don't mean that lightly, because we look at it very seriously, um, but we do things a little bit different than what that firm had, sounds like they had, they operated. We've gone back and reviewed our procedures since then, made a couple of little tweaks and formalities, but really, what we have been doing, we feel very comfortable with. And then we're your partners, but ultimately, you're the ones that get to work with the leader, it's your decision, so we try to provide you that information. Again, that timeline, if you want to push it back into February, you certainly can. If you want to go a little more aggressive into December, but that gets a little bit rushed potentially, but that's certainly up for debate and can be adjusted anywhere you want to. The other thing we would start right away is a stakeholder survey, if you're familiar with that. Uh, we would like to, we have a survey that we use that has a handful of very simple questions. We try not to make it too long, because people don't like long surveys. Essentially asking them, what are the strengths of the district, and what are some areas you could improve, what advice do you have for the next superintendent? Um, I'm forgetting one or two questions as well. Um, in a couple of spots, they'll rate different things on a numerical scale, and others will be more of a, just a, a chance for them to put in their summary comments as well, too. Uh, we would have a, usually it's about a three-week window, two-to-three-week window for that survey, depends on how long or how fast you want things to move. And then we put together a report and bring that back to you to share the highlights, um, as well, so that could be another meeting we would come to to present that information to you. Um, and then that's, one, it gives you a reflection of what you're really looking for, and that you know of, match what your community says, or is there a disconnect there? But then, the other piece that we really use that survey for, we drive all of our interview questions from the screening interviews to the final interviews from that survey. So the themes that we pull from there, we make sure to really hit in, um, in our interview questions. Obviously, we'll let other areas as well, so really get to dig into candidates, but we'll make sure those identified survey areas are a priority focus for that, so. It's, it's an important part to gather feedback, get people connected, and also help drive our next steps, too. Recruiting, obviously, as soon as, if we got the job tonight, we'd start tomorrow. We post things on our state, uh, website, information. I would have to work with whoever in your district does that connection piece as well. Uh, we post things nationally. We don't usually see a lot of traction from the national AAASA sites, but we still advertise there. If we can capture one or two candidates, that's great. Anything that we can in our contacts, the former administrators and AEA administrators, where we can connect, we think it would be a fit, we'll start to do that more. Motion piece, too. When we survey our candidates as they apply for jobs, the number one place that we get candidates from is our website. Which surprises me, but it's been the case for years now. Um, candidates in Iowa tend to know, especially in Iowa, but Midwest as well, especially tend to know that we have a lot of jobs, and they tend to look at our site pretty frequently. So, obviously, it would be posted there on all of our social medias, starting tomorrow. The other piece of information that we think is important is, once we start gathering applications from folks, you'll start to get a weekly email. Email will come from one of our support staff, most likely to Molly, and then we'd ask Molly to share that with board members. When we share communication back and forth, we usually just go to the board president, and whoever your district employee contact person may be. One, just to make sure we don't ever have an accidental situation where we get a email conversation going with multiple board members and have an open meetings violation. So we always try to keep that very streamlined. Uh, we We don't want to leave anybody out, but we try to have that be simple, that you can forward it on, and whatever methods you guys may use in your communications. So that'd be every Monday, and that email would simply have, you have three new candidates this week, and two other people that have started their application but haven't finished it yet. Once they have their applications complete, you'll also have a link to their basic information, their resume and their letter of application. So you'll get a quick snapshot of who they are, and you'll get that every single week. I can tell you right away who your first applicant will be. We see the same applicant, first one, every single time. Don't get worried, there will be other candidates that may be more qualified. We'll see a wide range, you'll see some really highly qualified folks, you'll see some other people that have nothing to do with education field at all, potential. So I don't want to scare you off when you see them come in, that's just the way it is. So then that happens every week until the application deadline is closed. And then at that time, we would have a summary sent right away to you, as far as we ask each candidate, why would Pleasant Valley be a good fit for them as a leader? And we'll share those summaries with you right away. And then we also ask them to disclose anything in their history they need to disclose. Have they been asked to leave a position? Do they have anything illegal in their, in their history of things they wanted to declare at that time? You'll get those right away, and then we would then come to a board meeting to give you a much more detailed information about each candidate that we have found as well. And what that would look like, at that meeting after the applications are closed, we will rank them. So as applicants are coming in, John and I and Trent will be continuing to carry notes, putting it up to who is going to dig into each candidate. We'll talk about them, and then we get together and we will put them into tiers. We won't rank them from one to twenty-two, but we'll put them into three tiers of, here's what we see as your most qualified candidates. Here's people that we think are qualified, but maybe are missing something, or maybe not the right fit, we don't think from our perspective. And it would be in yellow, and then the red individuals are people that we don't see as individuals either have the certifications, or the skill sets, or the right fit for you. And then you can obviously move anybody up and down from that list. As we get this decision to go into screening interviews, you could decide to do eight people from our green category, you could do three from green, three from yellow, and just do six. So you have the flexibility at that point, but that's how we will present them to you.
I think it's important to note that, other than stated references, we also check our, the networks. We have administrative in the state of Iowa, just about anywhere, we get three letters of reference. So we try to go deeper than that. We've been in a number of different parts of the state, so we, we tend to know people who have worked with or know of these candidates. And that's kind of an important thing. Sometimes paper looks good, but what happens in the field isn't always as much as paper.
Individuals that submit a letter of recommendation for a candidate, we do a confidential follow-up with each of them. It is amazing how different their confidential follow-up information about the candidate is versus what they, the candidate publicly to give to us too. So we'll probably, we'll share that with you too. And then what we'll also do for that meeting is, it begins to be a lot of information. So we'll try to also summarize it for you, each candidate on a page. Here's their highlights, here's information about them. We'll pull some snippets of quotes from the references that are strong. And if there's anything of concern, we'll put that on there to highlight as well too, so you'll have that as a, as a starting point as we go through it too. And then that would lead, after those, that meeting is wrapped up, you would decide, do you want to do a round of screening interviews? Most districts choose to, some choose not to, because they're like, nope, these are our three finalists, they're so far above everybody else, we're just going ahead with those three, and they'll skip to the final step. Almost everybody wants to do this rounding, make sure they have the right people, and that extra evening of Zoom screening has really worked well. My advice to you would be, do this no matter what, even if you have three very clear candidates. We can do it for three, it gives you another opportunity to know them before the full day interviews as well. As long as you've got a couple of hours to spare, that's really all it is, a sacrifice.
Gentlemen, I'd just like to let you know that you're about at eighteen, nineteen minutes right now.
So I'm over.
But if you want to summarize.
Can I have one more screen, and then I'll stop right there, because the rest of it, I can come back and forth to you.
Absolutely.
I knew that was going to happen. And then the formal final interview days, I wanted to highlight this one, because I think we're a little bit unique in this. Maybe not, I guess, but from what I hear from people, we're a little bit different approach, and I wanted to give you a rationale for it. We typically bring in, if you decide to bring in three final candidates, we typically do them on the same day. One, for efficiency. If you're having people involved in the interview process, which we would recommend, whether that's teachers, support staff, parents, students, you're only asking them to give up a chunk of one day, not three or four days in a week. It really allows for an efficient process. It doesn't allow things to drag on, and you made the candidate interview on Monday, by the time you get to Thursday, you start to forget things. So we think it just really works very efficiently that way, and we stagger them. So we'd have a tour, we'd recommend two mixed interview teams, we can talk about that following up to one of your questions, I'm assuming, at some point. And then you would have a time with the interviews as well. John and I would be here the entire day. I would sit with one interview team, he'd sit with the second interview team, if that's the way you want to go. And then we would coordinate that information as well too. I've got a ton more I could talk about on that day, but I will find some way to squeeze it into one of your questions. Thanks for letting me know, I just get going, there's so much to cover, I don't want to.
All right, absolutely.
Be short.
All right, so we all have questions, so we'll kind of go down, go around the room, but I get to start. So, given that your firm has multiple superintendent searches going on currently, is there a limit to how many searches that you will take at once? And how do you ensure that consultants' workloads are managed so that you can maintain focus and quality for each placement, each district?
Really good question, I'm glad you asked that, because we do do a lot of searches, especially in Iowa. It is not a problem for us as far as workload. The picture I showed you earlier of all those faces there, if we get to a spot that we are doing too many, somebody else takes that job on. Just to be very transparent with you, I am, right now, I'm doing the Mount Pleasant superintendent search. I anticipate we'll have that one done by mid to late December. And the other superintendent search I'll be working on is Northland, I think we'll have that one done by December as well. So, three to four searches for me, as long as they're staggered, is a very comfortable number. It sounds like a lot, but when you stagger them out over months, I have the flexibility and time to do that. So that's not a concern area. Trent's really good about monitoring us and making sure we're not doing too many. And then we always make sure to get feedback back and forth. And if, be then, another job comes open, say three more jobs come open in Eastern Iowa, well, Roger Wilcox, whose picture is on there, is probably going to be filling in to do those going forward then too. So, I don't see there's a problem, all that John talked about, his work, this is a little bit different.
For me, I forgot to mention, I'm a clinical assistant professor at Iowa now, so I retired to a second job. But there are only two searches that I'm doing this year. I'm second for Shannon at Mount Pleasant and Pleasant Valley. I will not do any other searches, I have nothing's going on, but these are the two I want to focus on. They're districts that I know a little bit, I know people from the area, and so I thought it was important, I want to help you find the right candidate. So it's the only two that I'll do, one before Christmas, one after.
If mine were overlapping the same timeline as Mount Pleasant and Northland, I'd be a little hesitant, but with ours being staggered, January fourth deadline, that's when the real busy work starts to happen. I don't see it being a problem at all. But that's a great question, because.
So you would stay with our search through the, through the.
We'll be all the way through.
All right, thank you. Any other follow-up questions?
Can you go and talk a little bit about the balancing surveys, focus groups, and other methods to ensure stakeholders is both broad and deep? And how it is important, how you will summarize and share back with the board?
I talked about the survey piece a little bit in depth earlier. As far as, we would encourage, what we'll ask you to do is, we'll put together the survey, review a link, and we'd ask you to blast that out to anybody and everybody in your community. Whether that's your social media, whether it's a newsletter you mail out, email, we'll give you signs or posters to put in a YMCA, or wherever, in each of your buildings. People who have a QR code, they can follow on there as well. We usually get really good responses from communities on that. I see no reason in your supportive community wouldn't get a really good number of responses. The other way we almost always have community feedback is during the full-day interviews. We briefly touched on this, I told you I'd find a way to squeeze this in. During the survey times, we recommend you do what we call mixed interview teams, where you don't have just the teachers meet with the candidate, and just the administrators, and just the parents. Candidates kind of know how to answer questions to make them look good to one group. Well, the other group may not be quite as positive about that. By mixing them together, they pretty much have to give the full answer to everybody at the same time. And it does allow for us to probably have a nice-sized grouping of people. We've had some groups up to twenty-five per team, like a little big, but we can make it work. And then what we ask of each of those members on those interview teams, we, for a district your size, I think you'd want at least two teams. If you want three, we can do that too. And we'd ask every single person that does that to fill out a form at the end. John will lead one team, I'll lead the other, if we need a third, we'll bring a third person in to do that as well. Well, they will answer specific questions about each candidate, and they will rank them. And then we will pull all that data together and present that to you that night in the school board meeting. So we always have the school board go last, because that gives John and I a little bit of time to pull all that data together, and then bring it back to you. It's not very pretty, because it's still pretty raw data we're pulling together, but you'll see a summary of every single community member, whoever you involve in those teams' feedback. And we'll break it down by their connection to the district. So we'll break it down by, here's what teacher said, here's what administrator said, here's what your community members or visitor are, however you want to categorize that as well. You'll see the summary data, and you'll see the breakdown data too.
I think the depth comes into play, we don't only ask liker questions, where you fail something, we, we actually allow people to give written responses. You know, that gives us the true depth of feelings and the thoughts and processes of district patrons.
And then the other piece, we mentioned in our information we sent to you, as well as if you want to do focus groups, we can certainly coordinate those as well. Most districts choose not to. They typically feel like these two avenues are a way to get, the survey captures a broad base of people, the interview teams captures more of a targeted but mixed group of people. If you want to do focus groups, we can do that. Last year, Clerk Creek Commando School District search that we did, they wanted to do something with that with a couple of different groups, it wasn't a whole community, it was different pockets. So we coordinated that, we set up the evening, we worked with the board president to make sure we were focused on the right areas, got some conversation, and we just summarized that data and presented that back to you. Last year, I did the search at Fort Madison, and at the very last minute, they decided they wanted to get one more round of community involvement in, so before the formal interview day, they wanted to have more of a open mic opportunity for the candidates. Anybody in the community wanted to come could hear the candidates. So we pulled that together, literally, two days before the interviews took place, made that happen, because the feedback they were hearing from the community is, they didn't feel like they had enough feedback opportunity, so we made that work. So, two things we always do, and then if there's other things you want to do, we can make that fit as well. Thank you. I'm going to go along on all your questions, I apologize.
That's okay, any follow-up questions?
So, do you have a problem with, since the survey is open to anybody, a problem with, like ballot stuffing, if you will?
We talked about that, and that came up in one of the district's last year question about it. We've never had an issue with it. We've talked about ways we go in and try to make sure we avoid that happening. We've not had to come up with that problem yet. It's, it always makes me wonder sometimes though, what happens if so-and-so decides, I'm going to do this fourteen times. There's ways we can kind of try to figure that part out, but it could taint the data. But again, that's not usually making your decision who to hire, it's just giving us themes. So if they're angry about something, or super excited about something, it's just going to make that theme look a little bit off, but we can make that work too.
What criteria guide, guides you in determining when you have gathered enough input to fully understand the district? And how do you ensure this understanding is sufficient if no interesting stakeholder sessions are held?
We really follow your lead on that. As far as district input, is it something that, do you feel like you have enough input in this as a board? Do you feel like you're, because. You're going to hear from your community members more than we're going to. I'll go back to that Fort Madison example. I wasn't hearing from Fort Madison members that they didn't have enough input. Their board members were, so we made that adjustment. So that becomes a conversation, as you guys hear things, Molly feels like we need to do something different. At any time in the process, we can certainly make an adjustment to do that too. So, I feel like the districts we typically serve in the process, we've shared, I think they feel good about the, the feedback they typically have. Again, we don't know your dynamics like you do, so we'll follow your lead on that to make it work.
Any follow-up questions?
My question's more kind of shifting focus a little bit to the recruiting. So, just wanted to kind of have one hundred percent clarification that your organization does its own recruiting, you know, kind of parsing it out to partner consultants. And I think there was a mention of the I S C, oh my gosh, what's the acronym? I'm looking.
I A S B.
I A S B, thank you, conference. And just curious if you could tell us a little bit more about how you would utilize that avenue to potentially recruit?
I'll start with I A S B first, and then kind of go back to that more broadly. We always have representatives at I A S B. We have a booth, so if you wander through the area, we always have a booth. Trying to do days extra to give us kind of a front booth. So we're going to suck back and back, like the snacks. Maybe that'd be a good idea? We try to, it gives us a couple of opportunities, one, to recruit for you, and start to connect to people. But also, it's a great opportunity for us to follow up with people that we just worked to get hired last year, to check, you know, board presidents or board members, how's it going, and then same thing with candidates too. So, I A S B is definitely one of the tools we use. I showed you a list of the things we had earlier that we use for recruiting. They all are important, but I don't think there's anything more important than John, correct me, than from his opinion, and our personal connections that we have. Especially the two of us, with Trent and our other colleagues. We really try to make a personal contact to folks that we think would be a good fit. And we'll be very honest with you, and this is a negative now, but it'll be a positive for you in six months. We do make a promise that we will not actively recruit any candidate that we have helped hire in the past. So, we're in a hire in this position, if we get the job opportunity, we will never come to that candidate and say, looks like things are going okay, but maybe you beat your sitting going to Bettendorf, or where, we will never, ever contact them.
Forever, there's no time limit on that?
No time limit. Now, if they would come to us and say, they want to apply for a job, or just apply for a job, we're not going to turn candidates away, but we will never recruit them either passively or actively on that piece of it. So I want to be transparent about that right away too, that, that's a, and that's, we always, John's newer this, I've only been here three years in this role. So sometimes we have to go to Trent and say, okay, I'm going to contact this person, but I want to make sure this wasn't a Grumeyer hire five years ago as well. So he has a database, we can connect with that piece too.
I've been an adjunct at Iowa for nine years, so the last nine years of my K-12 career, I've taught night class, fall and spring, and now I'm a full-time professor there. And so I have a good idea of the students who go through that program. I mean, I have a few people in mind who I think would be great candidates. Doesn't mean they would rise to the surface, that's your choice. But we're already formulating our own minds, people that we think would be a good fit for Pleasant Valley.
Yep. Kind of give a couple people a hint that we may.
Thank you. All right, has that covered?
Yep, thank you.
Any other follow-up questions?
Can I do a follow-up answer?
Yes.
Just some basic statistics I want to make sure we get to too, about the candidate pool, which ties into your recruiting question. Last, this is all data from last year, from our searches, so I can't speak to nationwide or other companies. We averaged last year fourteen applicants for a position. We'd love to see that number be more than that, but it's indicative of the nature of the world we're in right now. We did have a couple of outliers on the low end of Southwest Iowa rural schools that were about three candidates, that is concerning. But we also had Clerk Creek Commando job search last year, twenty-four or twenty-six applicants there. I think you're going to be closer to more of a Clerk Creek Commando situation. Your size, your district, your reputation, your location, there's so many positives as well. But I would say fifteen to twenty-five, as I said in your information, I think that's still about right. The internal candidates hired, I don't know if that's, we haven't talked about that here at all. Districts are to have internal candidates, about a third of the time end up getting hired, and a few thirds of the time they don't, about there, forty percent. The six percent out of state candidates hired, that's a very low number. But in Iowa, when you think about it, you don't tend to see a lot of applicants, according to Iowa, from Alaska or Illinois. I do think you will see more applicants out of state here, obviously location-wise and size. So I think that will probably be a little bit different. And then last year, about a quarter of our hires were females, which is down. The previous year, we were closer to forty percent as well too, so. So, it varies from year to year, but that's last year's snapshot. And then the bottom piece, about eighty-five percent of the searches that were held last year in Iowa, somebody in our team led the search. So, just to have a snapshot of where we were last year, so.
So, how do you reconcile the differences between the stakeholder priorities and board priorities to develop a unified leadership profile? And what process do you use when there are conflicts? And to ensure that the board direction remains central while still having stakeholder input?
That's a tough one.
Sometimes there could be a discrepancy.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's hard to reconcile that.
It is. So, back to the survey slide, for the first piece of data from stakeholders. What we do is, in fact, John and I just did this last Monday at Mount Pleasant. We had the survey completed, we sent to the board ahead of time. We came last Monday night to kind of do a summary report of that report. And some of the things we will do during that conversation. And some of the things we will do during that conversation is we'll go through, here's what the, the consensus from the group feedback was on strengths of the district. Here's the kind of summary of concern areas. Here's the advice for superintendents. And after each one of those, we will ask you, does this resonate with you? Does this feel reflective of what you're looking for as well? And if it's not, then we have to have that conversation of, are there other things to add? Mount Pleasant for the example is an open meeting and I'm not kidding you, we had 225 people there.
Not for us.
We, we lost that, oh my goodness, the people are very interested in the superintendent's search. They were actually closing the historical building later on that night. So it was a very open meeting is what I'm saying, so I'm comfortable sharing this information. They were extremely in alignment with the survey feedback, but they did have two other things. Facilities was one, they wanted to make sure that the community piece didn't quite represent quite as much as the board wanted to, the facility planning. And second one.
Maybe come out in the community survey.
So then they didn't disagree with the community, but they wanted to make sure we added those other pieces in to make sure it was fully reflective. So, so that's one way, that survey piece to match. I will say, the usual response I get from the stakeholder survey is board members are looking at us, you just see them nodding like, yep, that's what I hear from people, that's what I think. And it's usually a pretty simple conversation, but there are times we have to have that conversation. More difficult, I think, is when you get to the interview piece. Whoa, sorry about that. The interview piece involving team members, the form, the feedback we give you, usually, I've actually been very pleased with this. The feedback from the interview team members almost always aligns with the board's top candidate. Or if the board has decided to split between two candidates, it's almost always just one of those. Occasionally will happen that the board's third candidate in their mind is the community's first candidate. So, or sometimes the community feedback is very mixed. So that becomes the, then that leads to a very lengthy process of discussing with the board as far as. So what we tend to do at that time, it's ultimately your decision. So what we try to do is go back to the basics. Well, that survey report, on the top of every interview question, we'll have here are the survey themes that we all agreed upon. So as you're sorting out, feedback from the constituents in your teams versus your thoughts, are they wowed by the person's interview skills? But maybe they've lost track of the core principles. Or maybe you were wowed by something they said, but was that really what you wanted to focus on? So we try, we have those at the top of every interview question page, then we go back to that if it's a tough decision to make. And then each of the interview candidates, you also have a rubric to fill out on each candidate as well. So you'll have your, your own opinions, but you'll have your numerical responses too too. And then it's just a continual conversation discussion of that.
Does the survey ask for demographic information as far as like, would we know? Would I be able to know that the results were from District Five, which is the district I represent? Or is there no demographic component?
There is a standard demographic component as far as what is your connection to the district? Are you a teacher? Are you a parent? Are you a community member? And they can click more than one. So that way we can break it up in the survey report. I think we should be able to add, we have not typically done by which district are you representative of. I think we could certainly add that into the survey to help with that if that's important. I don't know.
It'd be interesting.
Do your constituents know what district they live in?
Probably not.
Some of them might.
We could add that, that could be an optional question if they wanted to. I don't want them to get stumped and say, I don't know, so I'm just not going to fill this out.
Or could have a not sure.
I just think it'd be interesting data for us.
And that's the, what we did at Planning Meeting for is feedback like that. So before we send that survey link out, we'll make sure it's what you want. Never done that, but I don't see any reason why we couldn't customize that.
Yeah, we do represent districts, so.
Director district?
Yes.
Yes. You guys know what district, but I didn't know if your community would know. Maybe, I don't know.
Any other follow up questions?
So I'd like to dial a little into the compensation report that you produced for us, on the comparative one. Can you tell me a little bit about how you get key data points, how you benchmark them? How we can feel confident in their accuracy and relevance? And then give me some sense of like, what does this thing look like? Are there averages? Are there medians? Means? What is, what are we expecting to see from this?
Let me make sure I'm understanding your question right first. So the, the feedback piece you're talking about is the interview data point at that stage, is that?
This is the compensation report of comparative districts and what we.
I misunderstood that part. Yeah, I don't have that slide here for you today. So what we do is Trent works at I S B. We pull together the 10 districts above and below you, size wise, look at all their salary and benefits package. And we'll put together what we would recommend as a range for your salary. Some districts take that range that we put together and say it looks good. Others want to have it more aggressive to attract it more or adjust it because of their budget concerns. And we can certainly do that piece as well. What I would remind you is at that stage, all you're doing is setting an initial range. Certainly make it look in the recruiting materials, final salary and benefit package to match experience level, however you want to do that piece of it as well. So you're not getting yourself tied into anything you're not comfortable with later on.
I will say Iowa's administrative salaries are very competitive. I have friends around the country, and we usually can draw people outside of Iowa for that reason. We're very fairly compensated in Iowa. We want to make sure it's a package that will, will actually bring in candidates who want to be here.
Which is, it's a great thing to have that compensation package, but it's also concerning even with the healthy compensation packages, our numbers of applicants still isn't, is where we'd like them to be or where they were 10 years ago too. So I think that is an important piece. I want to do your question right.
This is a very tactical question, but in light of, and I appreciate that you brought up the kind of Des Moines situation and just kind of got that out of the way. Can you confirm or kind of verify? Because I think that with that situation, the immigration status was a piece of it outside of the background check. Is that part of your process or is that something we would be responsible for?
Great question. I went to the slide I didn't quite get to earlier as well. So I pretty quickly queued me up to one of the slides I didn't get to earlier. So what we'll do on finalists, background checks, everything on the left-hand side is stuff that we do. Everything on the right-hand side is information that you either can do or have to do. So for example, we do all candidate references. We will do a national criminal background check, but it does not exempt you from having to do it as well. We just do that to make sure we're not missing something in bringing them forward and we, so to essentially double check on that piece, we just do an earlier round background check. We do do the state licensure check, that did come up in Des Moines situation. So we do take care of that one and ensure that is actually happening. Education verification, we do go back and make sure if they say they have their doctorate, they actually have their doctorate or whatever it may be as well too. So we do those level of checks. The background check includes sex offender, federal civil rights as well. But we, there are certain things we can't, we'd be willing to, but we can't do them, the employer has to. So those are the ones on the right-hand side. The extra reference check, that is if you want to, you don't have to. I can't think of any of our districts that we've led this have felt the need to do, but you're more than welcome to do so. But that's not a requirement because we essentially share them with you. The national criminal background is for all of your employees, so that's not anything different. And then the E-Verify and I-9 employment is what you're getting to, eventually coming to your question on that piece of it. We can't do that. We can, but it has to be done by the employer as well. So we will walk you through that process. We'll remind you when the time comes. In fact, the last thing we'll do before we walk out the door after a successful hire is we hand you a list of things that we are going to do going forward and a list of reminders that you need to do as a district as well. Usually the board secretary, HR personnel, yep, I know all this, but we make sure that's all covered as well. Well, I think those kind of cases do, as bad as they are, it does make you go back and review your practices. And we reflected, our last team meeting, had a lot of conversation, make sure there wasn't anything we were missing as well too. We feel good about where we're at, but it's always good to go back and reflect and make sure.
Is the question, are you authorized to work in the United States on your application?
It is. So if they answer honestly, you're covered, but then the other part comes later on with it. You know, I mentioned earlier, after the application deadline is closed, you'll get their list of things they have disclosed. That's one of the things you'll see right away.
So you said that you reviewed your process after this thing happened in Des Moines? And so when you reviewed your process, if you would have, let's say had him as a candidate, would your background check, would have, would it have caught any discrepancies? Did you review your processes? I'm just wondering if.
Trying to think of the situation specifics.
I believe it would have caught the fictitious doctorate.
Yep.
That for sure would have caught. And I would have thought that the national background check would have caught the criminal issue. I, I feel good that our process would have. Whether it would have done the immigration, I don't know. E-Ver, E-Ver I would have definitively caught that.
My hesitation to your question wasn't would it have caught it? I do think there were multiple people at fault in that process. And I think the search firm did share some of that information with the board and the board was comfortable moving forward with that. So I, I don't want to say we would have caught more than that because I think they did catch some of it. They didn't catch all of it. That education verification piece, they didn't. Our system will and should, I, I don't know why it wouldn't on that piece of it, so.
John, I see, do you guys call the universities that are on their list or how do you do the education verification?
So what we do is we actually work with a company that does it for us. So on the education verification, the national criminal background check and the social media check, we used to have somebody that would do all of that. It became so unwieldy for us to do it and it wasn't our area of expertise. So now we pay somebody to do those for us and then they give us a summary report and you will see that as well. And the one that is overlooked, which I don't think it should, is the social media check. So that's one that, that's actually where we started a lot of this a couple of years ago. And we had a person, a young person, a college age student was doing a lot of our social media checks because they knew it better than we did. And now as that became more and more prominent, we have a company that does that piece for us. They give us a great report, give you a ton of detail, but also give you, here are the key pieces you need to know. Red flags or clear or like social media, sometimes it's gray, you'll see those as well too. So we'll share that with you at the time of applications headline too. That's a big one, always has been and even more so after the Des Moines situation.
Yeah, that'd be great.
From your previous placements, what are the top three qualities you have consistently found most critical to superintendent success? And how do you assess these qualities during the process, including examples where they are pivotal to a successful placement?
That's a great question. Can you repeat the very first part again? I want to make sure I.
From your previous placements, what are the top three qualities you have consistently found most critical to superintendent success? How are they, including examples, but how have they impacted successful placement?
I'll answer all.
One, I don't think I could say there are three things in every district because it is a personalized process. So the three things, obviously three, that you outlined may be different than Mount Pleasant who we're working with now. So there is some difference. I, I can, I can talk about two that come up a lot. Communication and open and approachable. Just about every search, whether it's been for a principal that I've done myself or for superintendent, those, those are, they're so much more important than they were 40 years ago. Those almost always come up. Shannon, let you.
Yeah, I was going to flip back to the survey piece because the couple of things, themes that always show up. Are the candidate, candidates approachable? And are they, their communication skills strong? Communication is almost always a challenge, people feel like. So those are two themes that always come up in the top 10 categories of the survey, it feels like. Maybe it won't in yours, but so far it has. When I think of the three characteristics of a candidate that leads them to be successful in the hires, we don't have any quantifiable data to say what that would be necessarily. Like John said, every hire is a little different, what they're looking for. Sorry, my phone just started talking to me for some reason. What I, what I have seen, that just is very anecdotal from my experience with it, is, is the person genuine, which then leads to a fit. Is what you see in the interview, is that who you're really getting? Does that match their references? Does that match their paperwork, all of that? Are they genuine and are they the right fit that way? The other two kind of line up, like John was saying. I apologize, I have no idea what's going on.
I would also say.
Other piece, those two things I was going to mention were, I think transparency is very important in this role as well too. And that's one that tends to pop up. And then the third one I was going to mention is the communication aspect. I can't imagine being a successful superintendent, being a strong communicator, from listening, talking, gathering feedback, those pieces of things. I think of, as we hear feedback informally from boards and from candidates, those are kind of the three things I would jump to.
I think what helps us, you know, we've been around for a long time. It's a nice, nice way to say we're old. We, we, I don't know that there's ever a candidate that we won't be able to talk to somebody who's not one of their official references. Because oftentimes you'll get the most honest reference if you know somebody who knows the candidate. And so we strive really hard to get references on people, just anecdotally from people that we know who would know them.
Whether it looks as a reference or not.
All right, any other follow up questions on that one? All right, we've got about 10 minutes left and we've got a couple more questions. Brent, do you want to go ahead with?
Sure.
Excuse me. Can you talk to us a little bit about how you would support the board if they cannot come to a consensus on a candidate?
We've had that a couple of times, ones I've worked with. Couple of different steps we'll do is we'll have, like I mentioned earlier, we'll try to go back to your priority pieces. Because it's easy after a long day of interviewing and Zoom interviews and everything else to kind of lose focus. So that's where we'd start, try to go back to that piece as well. What is the domain thing? And then the second piece we do is go back to what is your community feedback say? So it's, it's a board decision, but it's always good if you're aligned with your, your community, your stakeholders on those feedback pieces as well. If there's still debate after that, there's a rubric that we do for every question interview process for the board members to fill out. Some choose not to do that at all, it's not their comfort or style. Others, that's a great piece for them to do as well. I would think it's, there's no reason not to do it. And then if you don't need it at the end, you don't need it, but it doesn't take a lot of effort to do that. So I'd encourage you to go through that rubric and then you've got some numerical data to help to compare as well too. If there's still a split at that stage, then we start to have conversations. At that point now, do we need more information? Do we need to, in worst case scenario, go back to the board and bring in more candidates for interviews? If it's, it really depends on what the cause of that discrepancy is. Is it, if we have two rock stars, we just can't decide which one, we don't need to bring more candidates in. If it's, we have two people, we have concerns about both of them, do we need to revisit and look at more individuals for that piece? If it's a situation where, it was district this was last year, but they had a five-two split in their internal, it wasn't, there's no vote, but there's, you know where everybody stands after the conversation. Then it really became, board president, myself, working with the two individuals. If you're, you want to build your case to try to convince others to see where you're at. And if not able to do that, are you comfortable moving forward with the other board that this other candidate may not be, you're a 1A, but would you be comfortable with them as a 1B? I've never had to go to that stage of having to dig back for more or to start over or to extend it. But obviously that happens from time to time too as well. So I do think what's important is even if there's discussion behind the scenes that maybe it's not quite, everybody's 100% in alignment. When it comes time to make that final decision, a job offer, anything that's not unanimous leads to challenges right away. Whether it wants to feel unwanted. So then becomes that matter of part of the conversation as well. Even though it may not be your perfect choice, is it somebody you feel like could do a good job and serve the district well going forward? So it becomes several steps, conversations, and that's, that's not unusual, part of the decision-making process. Anything else you would add to that, John?
No, I, I think, you know, we're consensus builders by nature. You know, we've done it in our careers and we've worked with a number of boards and we would do the same thing. And I would guess 99.5% of the time ends up being a candidate everyone thinks will do a great job and they're the 1A. But there are times when we have to go a little bit deeper. If you do have questions about one candidate, we can always go back and look for more information about that, that one question you have about a candidate. So we can also dig a little bit further.
The one thing I'll say we will not do is we will not say, well, we think you should hire this person. We will not do that. That's not our decision, that's beyond our scope. Give your thoughts if you ask us, but that's beyond.
Doug and Keel, you guys had a couple of questions.
Yeah, mine looks complete. Your mind is too. So if we have a little bit of time and no other questions.
Yeah.
We didn't cover the backend of the process too much.
We didn't cover the backend of the process too much. So we picked somebody, helping us through that.
Thank you. So yes, the backend, which is the most important part, is all, it's, it's great, but if we don't close the deal, it hasn't been a successful process. So we got to interview, we got the feedback from committee, our committee members to give to you. We will share that information with you. Start to give you guys a chance to give your thoughts as a match. I would say a vast majority of the time, the decision is pretty much aligned for most community groups and the board. Thankfully, we love it when the data aligns that way, but it doesn't always, um, as well too. So, so that becomes the, a big step in the process, obviously. And then the other piece that, um, we actually do before the final interviews take place, once your finalists are named, I will send each of the finalists a pre-negotiation form. And what we essentially ask them at that time, what are they going to ask for in a contract? One, two, three years, certain salary, what benefits, is there anything else they want to bring up? And then the big one, kind of the bottom is what is your family commitment to this position? If it's anything to one to 10 scale, if it's anything less than nine or 10, we call them immediately. Cause we, the last thing we want to do is have you go through all this process. And then they're hesitant to make the decision or they changed their mind, um, as well too. So, uh, so that becomes a big piece of the, the process. And the other thing I'll add, we always invite the finalists to bring their spouse or significant other with them for the final interview day. If they, some do, some don't, just depends on their situation. And then we'll work with someone in the district to help coordinate experience for them as well for that day. It gives you a chance to meet their family essentially and them to see the district and hopefully feel good about things too. Our goal is that night, so after we go through all the interviews that day and gather all the feedback and you have your board meeting that night, we, our goal is to make a job offer that night. I have not had a search yet that we have not been able to have a successful closure that night. Always the case, but that's definitely our goal. We try to do as much pre-work ahead of time with the candidate and the board to make sure they feel comfortable with that. We can always slow it down if we need to.
I'd also add, once you hire the candidate, we don't, we don't just abandon you. Uh, we offer a live workshop for all new superintendents that have been placed through Grunmeyer. We did it at Newton this year, usually all of the consultants are there. Usually the superintendent will bring someone else from the district, chance them to get to know each other early in July. And we have sessions that they rotate through. We're just as committed to making sure the person gets, gets on the right track immediately as we are to getting the right person. Uh, so we don't see the relationship ending. Let's say it's January 27th when you hire the superintendent, we want to continue to have a relationship and make sure that's a good fit and they hit the ground right.
That's the fun part of the job for us as well, seeing them get off to a good start. In this year, that summer workshop John talked about, we're going to invite board presidents to come as well too. Sorry, you, the board president and superintendent and the SPO on the same page that you started. The other piece that I'll mention is, I should have probably mentioned this earlier when you were talking about when the board is potentially stuck. We also have each of the finalists complete an advanced insight report. If you've done that before, um, a DISC assessment essentially of what their leadership style is. There's no right or wrong approach to this, but sometimes it's important. If you need somebody that's more decisive or do you need somebody that's more, um, somebody that's more cautious and different things? There's different ways to look at that. So it's, it's a tool that can be used in the decision-making. I'll have that report to share with you at the final interviews as well. But I think the real value to that is once you make your hire, this becomes a great tool to work with the, your new leader. What style do they operate best on? Do they operate best under chaos? Do they operate best when they have information ahead of time, which is communication style as a board with the superintendent? So, so that tool isn't just used in the hiring, but it's a tool to use going forward too, so. And as John mentioned, the post-hire piece of it, um, we take you all the way through that finishing piece of it. We'll work through a press release for you. Um, and then the candidate will also do a video of themselves and a welcome video that they like to send out to the community. We'll also share with their social media folks, introduce themselves to the community, we'll pull all that together. And with the candidate, which is usually done a month or two after the hire is made, um, to kind of keep it fresh in people's minds and introduce them to people they haven't met yet as well. And then we also do offer, um, if people want to help with lead through the superintendent evaluation process for the first year or two. Evaluation, where the person that leads the process to allow you to focus on the goals and the superintendent not have to worry about trying to coordinate that piece. So, um, so it's kind of the decision-making stage and then the post-hire piece as well. I wanted to ask that because we didn't get a chance to put that earlier.
Got about a minute left if there's any other questions or anything else you'd like to share.
I have a question. Yeah, as you mentioned, it's been over 60 years, 65 years that we've even had a search. Was there a search 65 years ago, Brian, or?
That's a really good question. I don't, I know who they all are, but I'm not sure.
Don't know.
Which one?
That came before, that came before Haley.
That was before Dale.
I mean Dale.
Mary was, and then Dale.
Okay. And so, you know, we've been dealing with 60 years of people who've been in the district and they kind of know the culture. So one of the, one of the questions that I have is how do you as a, um, search firm, get a good understanding of the culture of the district so that you can, um, that candidate you think would mesh well with that? What, what, what is your learning process in that?
Great question. It's amazing you've gone 62 years or whatever it is without having an outside search of any sort. That says a lot about the district. Those facts like that become big pieces for us to recruit as well. I assume you want to find somebody that's a long-term fit, what you're looking for. That shows stability. Everybody wants, says they want to have a long-term fit, but maybe they had seven superintendents last ten years, so. Doesn't lead people to confidence necessarily, so things like that. Uh, the planning meeting, uh, like I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of me sharing things with you. Just help you feel comfortable, but it becomes a very much a listening session for us as well, as far as what do you want? What you need? And then the, the survey from the community, we watch that as those survey results come in, uh, to help us get a vibe of are there hotspots here? What are the, um, key issues? And then there's some informal things we do, like, I like to get here early before most board meetings. Chance for me to go around the community, whether that's just simply eating at a restaurant, talking to people. Stopped in Mount Pleasant for pizza one night before a board meeting, did I get an earful? I was looking for. So just those informal pieces of things as well too. And then for us also to talk to people that we know that know PV as well and give us their thoughts and perceptions too. Knowing that everybody's going to have their own unique thoughts as well, so. So it's really, we rely a lot on you for that part and for your community feedback. That survey is a driving factor for us and that's why we do it early in the process as well too, so. But we're open, if there's things you want us to do in addition to, if you want to have more of the community forums and open discussions, that's great, not just for you, but for us as well. We're willing to try different approaches than we normally do there too. Leave anything else out there, John? Pretty much covers.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate you taking the time this evening and we learned a lot. So, any other questions to wrap up? Okay.
Thank you too.
We hope to get a chance to work with you, if we don't, we wish you nothing but the best in your search. Hope it's not 62 more years before.
We hope it is.
Thank you, John, Shannon.
Thank you guys.
Take care, guys.
Okay, so we will do our, um, Leanne will do the, the matrix first. Leanne, we'll do the matrix first before the next group comes in.
Yes.
Take about five minutes. On the, uh, search firm scoring tab, you can kind of go through the different areas. And it's, uh, one to five. Five is outstanding, one is inadequate and it kind of explains where you rate those.
Anybody want a cookie or chips?
They're in the kitchen.
Cookies are amazing.
They're so good.
Public record. These are amazing.
It was a search firm rubric, were they not?
Um, yes, yes. And then within the search firm rubric, you'll go to the search firm scoring tab.
Okay, I would have to be excited.
I see search form scoring matrix. I see this.
And your last thing.
Yeah, camera, sure. Oh, I'm, okay, I see, okay, got it, got it, okay, got it, got it, okay.
So good, thank you very much. You don't want to be thrown off. Well, you have your own questions, right?
Yeah, I know.
Well, here's my question. Between what's printed and what we're supposed to fill out here. Because what, what I put in here is not the same as what's on there.
Had to combine questions. So I had to take. From the instructions.
Fill out Jameson's form.
You missed it.
Excuse me a second, I want to do that assessment. Do we have? Around the way, two minutes?
Here, I'll do it on this one. On the, on the board.
Yeah, I opened it and thought it was junk. I just opened it, look how big it came. That is.
I only have one question on the financial reports tonight, so it'll be quick. It was sinking to me when I read it.
It was a thing that worked, so.
Same, I can't be meeting for our POM this weekend, so. Cut back, I need to give a talk. I cut back last night, so she's like, oh, gotcha.
Exactly, yep, exactly.
Maybe not Arch as much, but the rest of us will.
Hi, Gary Delacy.
Hi, Gary, I'm Jill Kennedy, Director of Student Services.
Nice to meet you.
Hi.
Gary Delacy.
Bernie.
Hi, Gary Delacy.
And Bernie.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. How are we doing? I'm surprised you didn't.
Now I can see.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, who is this guy?
How are you?
My old basketball.
Brockman, it's true, nice to meet you.
We can say it. Exactly.
Adrian.
Are we ready?
Are you ready? All right, welcome gentlemen. Uh, we've reserved about an hour to, to visit with you this evening. Um, we can start out with maybe about a 15-minute, uh, talk and what you want to, uh, convey to us. And then we also have some questions after that, so with that, go ahead.
Great. We're going to divide up our time, the 15 minutes. Again, I'm Paul Tedesco and, and we represent HYA. All right, that's, uh, there's the individuals there. Again, we're all Iowa superintendents formerly, working with a national company. We think that's a great advantage for your search. And again, uh, these are a lot of schools across the state, the nation. In-state, we have Ames in 2024 and we have ISB Director in 2023. And we have, uh, West Des Moines in 2021. Ankeny, I think was 2021 also. So the national part of our firm gives us so many advantages and resources to work the field of applicants and to work with you as a board. All right, I missed one or two here. I wanted to say at the beginning, hiring a new superintendent is a huge responsibility, you know. We're here to tell you that with our help, it'll ease the pain and bring down the stress level. We're here to tell you that with our help, it'll ease the pain and bring down the stress level. And you'll have a highly qualified individual to lead going forward. I don't have the slide up there. Again, we believe we're going to be a partner with you. And it's not something that we do to you, we partner with you. I think that's very important. And we have so many boards that would tell you the same thing, we did a pay reference check. And our firm has, uh, nine. Nine point four out of ten. Of the superintendents that are placed, they either first contract, three years or more. This group here in front of you, have never had anybody less than three years. I think that's very important. There's no, somebody's done a semester, or somebody had to be replaced, three fourths of the year. They made their first three year and beyond. And I think that's a highlight for you. And again, I want to mention that, that national side of us, give us support as well as. We can provide you for support. So I'm going to talk about engagement, which is kind of the first step in the process. And I think this is going to be really important for this district. I am familiar, I used to be the superintendent at Clinton. Spent a few meetings with Brian over the years. And I'm very familiar that PV has really worked hard to build from inside with leadership. From the Dale Barbers to Jim Spelllog to Brian, you've had that. What I, I'll be honest, envied and tried to get going at Clinton to do that, but sometimes it doesn't work out. And you're probably in a situation right now where you may not have an internal candidate. Or there, there's only a couple options where you might start be looking outside. And to me, this is the time to really get a chance to reflect of where you're at as a district. What are the characteristics that you're really looking for in leadership? And try to match that up. So that engagement piece is getting that input from the board, from the administrator, staff and community. And what they want in their new educational leader. And one of the things that YHA has is a research-based instrument. Part of it is forced response. Going to make you have to choose some things in terms of what you would like in that candidate. And then there will also be some open response. And what you're going to find out is then you're going to get a report based off the research in terms of, these are the characteristics. That you want in your superintendent. Why is that important? Well, educational leadership. We all have our strengths and weaknesses. I'm a former superintendent. And there's always a breakdown, like, are you transformational? Begin to change? Are you more democratic, really working with? The community, with the staff, with the administrators, really trying to build that together? Is that? Part? Are you more of a servant leader? Lead by example, do, you know, never ask to do anything. Someone would, you know, look at me, I was probably a servant leader. I'm still driving a bus this morning. And that all started. Drivers at Clinton, I had to get my CDL to get kids to school, and I figured if I'm expecting my staff to do it, I need to do that as a superintendent. So that would be an example of servant leadership. Is that important? Or instruction? Which I know is very important in this district. You look at the Iowa School Report Card, we see how you score, how your kids really progress through. Career and technical, the college readiness. Those things will come out in that survey. What is important? And then, w- we'll move to the recruitment piece in a minute, but then that gives us some data in terms of, who do we recruit? Who meets those kinds of things that are going on? So, the first part, and it's a two to three month process, is really figure out. Where are you at as a district? What are the characteristics you're looking for that new instructional leader? Are you really important in, in maintaining the things that have went on? Or do you feel like the district is now at a point where, hey, maybe it's time for a pivot? In that leadership. We're now at that point, we need to look at that. And that. Months engagement piece. We will, after that survey, meet face to face with the different groups. We'll meet with parents, we'll meet with you, we'll meet with the administrators, and we'll do some. Calculating with them and say, you know, is this where we're at? Do you feel very comfortable, or are there's things that we need to add? You will obviously be the last group. Because then we will share that feedback with you to say, this is where we're at. And then that, that hopefully will lead to the next piece. How do we recruit a great pool of candidates for Pleasant Valley?
You know, the different. The different phases of finding your next superintendent. And, um, what Gary shared with you was the engage part, and it really, as we look at each of the phases. As we look at the recruitment, the selection and the transition. It builds on each other. The foundation is going to be the data that we receive from your community yourselves, and being able to identify, what is it that? And, and when we talk about what we ask for, we ask the individual groups. What are your strengths? And we have it prioritized in terms of, this is what we find very, very important. And then those to the bottom, not that important, or we don't want that. And so then, when you look at, uh, how that helps us. We know what our, our district demographics are, we know what the district wants. And what's nice is having the different groups. You might miss something that the parent group might have. You might feel that your perspective is very, very global, and you understand the district well. But you might have something that, that might be overlooked. So when we look for recruitment, we use the data to be able to try to attract people that would have the type of qualities. That would build upon your strengths, and also address some of the areas that you'd want to improve on. And then, when we advertise, we advertise. HYA has a robust site, a website. And we have twenty six, since January of two thousand twenty-three. We've had, um, forty-six thousand users. Twenty-six thousand, um, individuals signed up for emails. Six that offered themselves, six thousand that offered themselves as candidates for jobs that would open. And then we also have a hundred and thirty associates with HIA na- nationwide. That we could also, um, look at, saying, here are the qualities that we're looking for, for a candidate for Pleasant Valley. Do you have anyone that you know of in your area? And why would someone from Georgia want to come to Pleasant Valley? They might have family here, they might. Want to move from one area where the education is well-known, is you're a strong district that way, and that's what they'd like to do. And so as it builds upon each other, the data this, that's gathered with the engage comes into recruitment. And obviously comes in with the selection. And as we look at selection, we all know what's happened with the Des Moines school system. And the screening that we do is to make sure that, and quite honestly, uh, the rigor that we would have on candidates. Initially, is going to be much higher than has been in the past, because then it would be the finalists that would really get the rake over. So, um, that is something that is very, very important. And, uh, as we advertise, advertise on, on national publications, we advertise with groups. Uh, we have, obviously, with, um, Iowa Teach and also with Iowa. Their, their works. Not as strong, but, uh, we would say that we cover as many opportunities as possible. To get the best candidates interested in your, in, in your district as possible. And then, we divide, once we do the selection, we, knowing the type of individual that your district needs. Then what we do is we pretty much put them in three groups. We recommend to the board, these are candidates that we recommend that you would interview. The next group would be candidates that you could interview, not as strong. And then candidates we don't think you'd want to interview. So with that, then, once selected, and through the process of, uh. Working with each of the groups, the interviews, with you and yourself, and making that selection to the final, then comes the transition.
And we feel it's really important. We really feel it's important that when you make the hire, that we don't disappear, that we're there. And so, there's two options. There's an option A, where for the first hundred days, we're there basically, hand in hand, supporting. All the way through the process. And I'm aware, and I've been in Iowa my entire life, I'm aware. You're going to get mentoring opportunities from SAI, there's supports from ISB or ISFLIC. All those organizations, and we will certainly utilize those organizations as well, because they specialize in Iowa. But we're talking about a parallel mentoring experience, where we use a strategic portal for tracking progress and communication. And really hitting the ground strong that first hundred days, and then doing executive co- coaching, which is. Two one-hour virtual sessions per month, where we're trying to, uh, help hit the ground running with that new superintendent. Particularly with the. An opportunity where you might have a external candidate for the first time to really help them with that. We also, if you feel, can go. There is an option B with additional supports beyond that. And beyond it, option B includes all of option A, but there's also board governance training. Superintendent evaluation facilitation, which that can be also helping the board with that process with a new superintendent. And then obviously finance budget support. Which, uh, in the, in those kinds of areas, so. Those are opportunities, we're here to support, and we want to make sure the candidate, uh, that you have is successful. Okay, so you've heard our opening fifteen minutes, you went over.
No, you're good. You were actually worried.
I thought, you know. We're ready for your questions, and, um, we look forward to this conversation.
Thank you.
I'd like to hearing about the surveys that you do in order to get stakeholder input. But, um, wondering if you have exclusive sessions for the district and staff or educators? And if you could provide details on how focus groups are formed, and their role in the candidate selection and assessment process.
Okay, so, uh, on the part of how do you select your focus groups? We look at the board for the community, people that you want on that focus group. And so prior to the initial meeting, where we're doing a lot of planning, picking dates, just so many different things. One of the things ahead of that time is, in school, right, you have homework. So you have to get on a Google form and put in your suggested individuals, and we have columns for why them, you know. Parent of a K-12 person, somebody who's in a booster club, somebody who's in the music boosters, whatever that may be, former board member, something of that nature. And we do highly encourage you not to, I'm recommending. Jill? Jill, would you take that if they call you? We encourage you, don't do that, because you're not going to have room for everybody's suggested people. Bring your suggestions, and that night, that initial meeting, we go through it with you. And what number you pick, is the number you want. Fifteen to twenty, you want less, you want more. We're okay with any number you want, but you had that discussion about, oh, you, you have everything covered in the school district. With the parents, or the community members that don't have kids in school. So that's the, that's the parent side. The staff side, we usually go to the buildings and ask the principals, you know. We want representation pre-K through twelve. So you can't have, and, and we also would prefer not to have everybody from the science department, pre-K through twelve. You know, so get some variation in there. Get some people that will represent different buildings, you know, because you're multiple buildings. And that, and then bring that information to you also. And, you know, if you have, it's kind of like you have the veto power. If somebody says, I don't want Paul on that committee. The principal recommended him, can we get somebody else? Well, there's probably enough other recommendations, you don't have to take Paul. And then, uh, for the students, we generally take high school. The president, vice president, secretary treasurer, those elected officials for those different four grades. Whether you involve the seniors or not is a choice. You know, so they, they get to be representative. Can you add other students? Yes, you can. So that's, that's brought to you from those other individuals. All right? Okay.
Any other follow-up questions?
Was there any other questions? Can you determine, or what criteria guides you in determining when you have gathered enough? And fully understand the district, and how do you ensure misunderstanding is sufficient?
So, combination of the, of the engage, the profile report. Where they fill out the summary, the survey, and we go to that face-to-face meetings. And we come to that board meeting, and we talk it out. So I don't know if you want to see those. Yeah, I don't know if you want to click it. We have some links here that are actually in that PowerPoint. When we talk about some of these reports that come out, they, they are research-based. But I want to show you.
Pretty small.
This is.
That's a good one.
This could digger, yeah. So. You should have this in your packet, but here's an example after the data comes out, and it has that data sheet profile, and it'll actually talk about. The different subgroups, and then we talk about, these are the things that they actually rated. Okay? And then, like I said, every, the nice thing with this being a national organization, they've got a re- this is a research-based instrument. So, they're going to be able to tell you, basically by sample size, having enough people that have taken it. Okay, this is with ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent validity. And you'll be able to look at the data with some confidence to do that. So, this is really one example of what you would get for information as a board, uh, after going through that instrument.
If you look at this, horse choices that we're talking about, you have a number of items which to choose. And you can see that is also divided by the different constituency groups that you are going to be using. And when you look at the percentages, for example, on this first one, you can see that all of them chose, um, that one is one of their top four. But you also see the percentage of forty-six percent, that actually isn't, that is an average of what all of it. Came together with all of the individuals that chose that particular item. So forty-six percent of the people, and in this case, there was, uh, close to two thousand people that responded. But forty-six percent of the people chose that. So, you might think, why wasn't it a hundred percent? It's because they chose other things too. So the top four, you can see, in this case, the first one was the foster streams, positive, professional climate, and mutual trust. And respect among faculty, staff, administrators. And then from there, you can see the other top four. But it, what's nice about this is that those four choices, you can see from each of the category groups. Where they place their emphasis. And then this might identify some of the things that might be overlooked as you look at, okay, I think I understand what parents want. Maybe there's something that they want that you didn't realize. So, this is very valuable when you're looking at the candidates that you're trying to recommend to the board to.
You want to point out the student one, the second one, hiring and retaining qualified staff? Notice it's not in their top four. And one of the things we'd point out to you is. And one of the things we'd point out to you is, probably we would expect that not to be in their top four, so you know, so don't be worried that, well, the students don't think that's important. You have children going to school, they got a lot of other things they want. Just want to show you that. And then, and the further answer, I think, the other. So you get this report, and we bring the information to you from those meetings in this report, and we ask you, what would be your top four? And some of the ones that maybe the, the board, it'd be further over the side, but some of the ones that you didn't have as your top four, might be in the top four with everybody else, and you go, okay, we'll, we'll take that one. Because you are representing them, and they could see that on fourth one down. Establish a culture of high expectations for all students and personnel. Well, that's teachers, sorry. We'll have to make a new column for board members. But I mean, that's where it comes back to you, and you make that choice. We don't, we don't come in and say, here's your top four. No, we talk it out. You may get way down the list, or you may just take two of the top four, something of that nature.
Any other follow-up questions on that one?
Actually, I will just, so, have you had any circumstances where you've had to deal with what I call ballot stuffing on these surveys, right? If it's an open link, anybody can get to it, and so you could put four responses in for yourself if you wanted? Have you run into that?
We haven't run into that yet.
Okay.
You know, and again, it's a, it's like a two-week timeframe, and then that's on our proposed timeline, which will change tremendously once you say we're the team, you know, you may say, I saw your timeline, blah. So, but usually it's a two-week timeline, and it just seems like, usually the, the numbers come in real fast at the start, and a little bit trickling at the end, and in between it's just, if it didn't catch their fancy, they aren't really coming back after it. We haven't had that issue.
Okay, thank you.
I have the next question. What criteria guides you in determining when you have gathered enough input to fully understand the district? And how do you ensure that the understanding is sufficient?
That can, that can actually be from individual to individual, because you might go through, and one is very easy to understand what their background is, what, what is being said about them. But then there might be some more probing, because something didn't just seem right. And so, one of the things that we can do is, each of the individuals, they submit information that we request of them, including their references. And then, we may, and do it pretty often, whether we have questions or not, is, we would ask those references, is there anyone else that we should contact that would be familiar with the professional work of this individual? And so, we get an opportunity to talk to individuals that aren't identified as reference people. And the other part of it is, we have, you know, we're very familiar with Iowa, and we have friends that we can contact and say, okay, next-door neighbor, Clinton, Brian, can you tell us a little bit about Gary? And so, and those conversations get really, you know whether you're getting the information or not, sometimes they said, we worked here from this time to this time, and that's all they give. And then you ask another question, they work from this time to this time, and that's all they give. So you know that maybe there's something there that you might want to put them in the survey.
Any follow-up questions?
Okay. So we've talked about focus groups, we've talked about surveys, and there's a lot of cool reporting that you're going to provide. I guess I'm curious, with all of those different inputs, how are you bringing all of those things together, and how is it helping the process? What does it do for the process?
Yeah, it'll eventually come to you. I mean, we'll bring those inputs to you, and it'll get to a, we want to be able to narrow it down to, like I said earlier, what kind, there'll be certain characteristics that are going to lead to say, boy, this is the superintendent that we want. And so, I think the, it'll be imperative for us, we don't want to tell that to you. We want to just be able to present that in a form where you, you guys will give the final decision. You know, we were showing that earlier, well, if you looked at the fifth one, it was like three percent below the fourth one. You guys will have some leeway as the board, you are elected members, to be able to look at that data and say, okay, I know what this says overall, but this really is a priority for the board, and this is where the buck is going to stop. We're the ones that are, are going to do that. So, to me, it's going to, we're going to bring you as valid a information as we can, and the thing that I really like about this organization is, is that they have been big enough, and they're research-based, that when we bring you that data, we can really say with certainty, we are very confident in, in the validity of this data. And for us, it's going to be just a number, you know, when you look at those numbers on top, you know, I'm a former math teacher, getting a big enough sample size to make sure that's valid.
The other thing I'd add, I think, true here, is, once you say, these are your top four, five, three, we don't have a number you can't go over, we'd likely have more than two or three, so, so we do have that kind of in mind. We take this information, and we use that in the recruiting. How, he might say, well, we ask those questions in a different way to who we're talking to about those individuals. How would you rate them in this category? What do they do in this area? What would you tell us that they have exceptional qualities in this area or that area? So it's, it's not just, we've got the survey down, we know what you want, and ignore it. We bring it into the background, I'm going to use a different word, sorry, the reference check, background is a whole different thing, and that's going to be important to go on in the conversation here. But that's, that's used throughout, weaved in there. So, the report that we give you, the summary report on an individual, is going to include information about what their references said about these three, four, or five.
And our job is to make the data simple to understand. And we want to bring it to you so that there isn't going to be any difficulty in understanding what the data says. And so, when we look at that, you get to the point where you might be looking at individuals that we're recommending, and you can't narrow it down below eight. Well, we might have to do a preliminary online screening to give you an opportunity to talk with these eight, if these are the ones that you want, so that you can narrow it down to the three or four that you want to have face-to-face evaluations with.
And those are still confidential until you announce finalists.
You, you mentioned trying to come up with a unified leadership profile. You mentioned examples of like a service, you want a service one, do you want a transformational one, do you want an instructional one? And the board may have its own priorities, but when you have stakeholders, they may have a different priority. How do you help reconcile if there's a difference between the board's priorities and the stakeholder's priorities, and making sure that we have stakeholder input, but we want to continue to have the board move in a unified direction?
My, my opinion is, as a board, you value their input, but you've got to make the final decision. Because, bottom line is, this is where the buck stops. If they, if that superintendent, for whatever reason, isn't doing what, what you would want him to do for the, or her for the district, it's going to fall on the board, right? All, all of a sudden, the teachers that wanted this candidate, they're, they're just going to go invisible on you, right? And let's say, what are you going to do about it? So, I think it, it, it's really important as a board, value the input, but they need to realize the ultimate decision lies right here with the board. And I think you, you can strike that balance, you, and that doesn't mean that you're going to agree, but you're looking, you're going to get a lot of data from a lot of different groups, you're going to have to balance that out, and say, wha, what makes the most sense for this school district? But ultimately, and this is just my personal opinion on this, I really think it ultimately comes down, the board's going to have to weigh that and say, this is what's best.
It's also going to be very, very important when you talk about onboarding a new superintendent, is that, if something that a group says this is important and the board respects what was shared, but as they onboard, they look at how they do the transition coming into the district, the parents really think this is something that's got to be addressed, that would be part of how that superintendent is going to make the transition into your district.
Any follow-up questions on that one?
Yeah, all right. So we've got a question on the, the compensation report that we, we sort of want to know what range we'd be talking about for a future superintendent. So, basically, the question is, you know, how do you help us have some confidence in the accuracy relevance and the benchmarking of that report relative to districts of our, you know, similar size and demographics? Tell me a little bit about that.
So we, we go, the state survey that's available right now, right now is two years back. Anyway, we get that information to you on a spreadsheet, ten up, ten down, basically, and, and then we, so here's the average, and then we say, okay, pick a number. We pick two and a half or three percent, usually both, and then double that because it's two years behind, and give you an idea. And then we could find out from schools, we can call them to make sure we have it. The third thing I would tell you is, we keep an eye on, not just our searches, but other searches, and say, what are they suggesting? Because, you know, they're going to hire at their top or their bottom, we bring that information to you. We want to know that at that initial meeting too, because people are going to ask. Usually not their first question, I hope not. And then, they're going to ask, and we want to say, here's the range, depending on your experience and education, and go from there. So that's, that's, bring you that data, get a little homework, look at it ahead of that initial meeting, and then try to decide together what this range should be.
So that data starts, is, that's starting is state-based only?
No, well, including.
Iowa-based only is maybe what I should have said.
Yes. But, and then also, when you look at searches in the area, it could be, you're so close, it could be Illinois too, a little bit, but for the most part, it's the Iowa searches that we know of.
You know, that's part of the recruitment as well. It's when the board, before we even advertise, determines what the range is going to be, that's, that's typically part of the advertisement.
I've got a question for you. Who is responsible for managing candidate communications and coordinating the scheduling of the finalist interviews and visits? Is it the firm, the board, both?
No, it's going to end up being a combination, because we've set the schedule with you at that initial meeting, you know, these dates and times, and things that will be talked about and given to you to look at. We, we try not to give you something, hey, while we're here tonight, let's look at this and give us your answer. We try to give you, ahead of times, you can be thinking about it, how's that fit to your schedule? But anyway, we would be communicating with you to make sure you know that we have two finalists, and here's their names, you've got their resumes, they're coming on this day, they're going to follow this pattern. You know, if there's some change, it's going to be before we set it with them, but we'll be communicating. And when I say we communicate, usually the board tells us how they want it. President only, and then that goes out to the rest of the board, through the HR, just send it to all the board at once.
Are you on site to facilitate it?
We'll be here, yes. And we generally have, I can't think of a time we haven't, if we're interviewing two in the same day or three, which is probably the most, you know, we have one-to-one on site.
Any follow-up questions?
So, sort of switching gears here, over to the board portal that you've got as a toolset. So, I assume that, like, candidate materials and communications are managed through that with us, is that like how that generally operates?
Absolutely. So you don't have to go back through, you might get an email saying, this is on there now, but you have the link to get back to it, so you don't have to worry about how I get there. But everything is in there for the board.
Okay. And then, so, tell me a little bit about like how that platform is set up? Is it just like, is it using other toolsets? Is there extra security to it? You know, today, it's pretty common to have like a text response, log into it. Tell me a little bit more about the tool itself, please.
It's a Google site, and it's on HYA's website. It's in the front page, it's underneath there, but, so, and I don't, I don't believe there's a two-step process to it, so I'd have to maybe find out that. I don't believe there's been one in the past.
Okay.
But you're good at it, is my thing.
Okay. I've got enough, thank you.
Okay, switching topics a little bit, that you already brought up the Des Moines situation, which was kind of in the headlines around here. Can you tell us a little bit more specifically about the steps that your firm takes to do kind of all that due diligence, verifying, background check, license, licensures, degrees? I don't know if you look at anything Citizen Trip related, or if that's on, on us, but kind of can you give us some more information on all of that?
Typically, when we do an evaluation of the candidates that have applied, we do a, not an in-depth background check, we usually do that when we get more towards the finalists. And in doing so, we'll look at the Secretary of Economic and Regulatory Registry, we'll look at verification, this has to be something that has to be approved by the candidate. If they don't approve it, they probably aren't going to be in that first group. But it's going to be searching out validity on their degree, on their social security. And so, in doing so, you will know, and believe it or not, even with Des Moines, with Superintendent Roberts, a simple Google search would have found a lot of what they had. And so, when you look at, and you, you look at social media, and social media, a lot of stuff doesn't go away. So, there's a lot of preliminary kinds of things that you can do, but there is a more in-depth option, and usually something that we need to do when we're talking about, this is the group that we really think has a lot of potential that we want the board to evaluate. And so, you know, we're looking at degree verification, obviously, that was important in the Ian Roberts situation. We have the employment verification. So, all of those things are available, and that would be something that, when they get to that point, there might be some more cost for that.
Just to kind of give you a little more background on where you could find a, you know, just maybe of information here. Number three in our pre-interview question, the first paragraph is, because none of that is in our bid, sort of be an additional cost, okay? And, and you can see the second paragraph for that one, I'm quoting in there prices from ISB. And, and I've worked with one source, the last since the Ian Roberts thing, and, and I'm now registered with them, meaning if we're hired, Leanne can add me in, you pay the bill, I'm making that right up front to you, it wasn't in our bid, you pay the bill, but you tell me what you want. And what I'm getting at is, degree verification per candidate, twelve dollars. Content-based social security verification, just, is a, you know, a social security number, is it really there? At five dollars per candidate. Employment verification is ten dollars per employer. So, those are there, and can be taken care of on your behalf, and I, and the only work Leanne has to do is put me in there, and then we get them to sign the permission that we, you know, if you're all the applicants, they have to get permission for us, but those reports would come to me, you wouldn't have to order them on or worry about that type of thing. We're not looking for more work for Leanne or anybody else at the school in that regard. But that, that's something, and then the ISB model. And then the I S B model has a forty-four dollar and fifty cent, I believe. And I think when you look up above the nineteen fifty and eleven hundred from H Y A, I'm, I'm not trying to downplay what they have and they offer, but you get it in combination with the forty-four fifty and some of these items here. Okay? So, in other words, their forty-four fifty doesn't have degree verification, social security card, employment per employer, you know, that type of thing is not in there. Add on forty-four fifty plus ten or twelve and five, still quite a bit lower than eleven hundred and nineteen fifty. And I'm not here to sell you a higher product when you've got access to something that's not that high, and it's very, very good.
I mean, basically, you've answered that question as well. But getting back to twenty other questions that I have. Yeah, it's been about sixty or so years since we've had internal candidates, external services. And so, one of the things that we've been benefited from by having internal candidates is that they understand the culture of our district. How do you plan on learning about the culture of our district in the search process to make sure that we get a candidate that understands that philosophy? And you can present those candidates to us as well, because I think culture is really important to a district.
Well, I'll be honest, I feel like I've got an advantage. I've been in the same conferences Pleasant Valley, believe it or not, you go way back. I was a teacher-coach for sixteen years at Clinton, coached against Pleasant Valley. I could throw out some names like Ed Merritt, I don't know if that means anything or not. Brian probably remembers. So that dates me back. And then, obviously, in the last seven years of my educational background, I worked, I'll be honest, side by side with Brian on a number of things. I'll be honest, one of my best friends is Randy Teemer. I don't know if that rings a name, but he was longtime athletic director here at Pleasant Valley. I'm, I'm, I haven't worked for Pleasant Valley, but I'm very familiar with Pleasant Valley from the, from that conference standpoint. And I understand the expectations of the district. This is a growing district. Lots of great things going on in the district. I'll be honest, yeah, it's going to be a big hire. Because to me, I think this is a district, you're probably very good. How do you go from very good to great? I think that'll be one of the challenges. And to me, that's the, one of the hardest steps, right? If you're very good, sometimes you get satisfied with that. How do you get to great? And I think that'll be one of the challenges. How do you find that candidate that is willing to, you feel like, hey, that can make that step? And I, and that's for me, just working and being around Pleasant Valley all those years. But I think those are some of the things that I'm thinking about, if we're fortunate enough and you pick us, to think, this is what, what I feel like, we'll go through the data and that. But I think this is, if, if I was applying for the position, I'd be thinking, how do you make that? How do you go from that very good, very good district to great? Because that, that is a very difficult step.
Any follow-up questions?
Can you tell us how you would support the board if we could not come to consensus on a top candidate?
A lot of decisions here to come in. I'm going to assume when I start this, and then you can direct me afterwards to another thing you're thinking. But, so let's say, we're going to hire Bob, and the vote is two opposed and the rest in favor, you know? And I'm talking, we're in closed session. And we're not really voting, but we're saying, anybody have, you know, we've talked about all the candidates, we've looked at the data from, because the focus groups will give you input that we'll have you go over. So they don't just do their report, it's electronic filing, it goes on a spreadsheet, and you can get numbers and you get comments. Anyway, you know, we get down to it, we just say, it's these two, one of these two here. There've been more positive comments about Bob, sorry, Gary, than Gary. And I could have used Paul, sorry. But anyway, and so it's, it's that kind of a deal. And we will, I will definitely, and we've all done it, tell you as a board, you've had your say here. I know we're in open session now, but you've had your say here in closed session, what you disagree with and everything else. Okay? But when we come out, we highly encourage you to go, you know, all in. Everybody votes in favor. Then, you know, Paul's a constituent, knows one of the board members that, you know, I'm pretty sure you didn't like that guy. And you can, you know, your comment to those kind of people, we educate you basically on this, if you don't already know it, is, you know, I had my say, we talked about it, and the majority didn't see it my way. I'm supporting the majority. We're on this board together. If you can't do that, then it's two against and a majority in favor. I mean, you can do that, you can do whatever you want for a vote, but we highly encourage you to go out publicly unanimous. Is that what your question was?
Yes, thank you. We've also had a situation in a school district that had a difficult time deciding between three candidates. They interviewed, they loved them all. And so, what we did is we had a forced choice. We said, pick the one that you want as superintendent, and we do this individually, confidentially, and give a reason why. And then after that was done, they did a go-around. And believe it or not, some of the folks said, you know, I missed that. And that brought consensus by just doing that.
And I do think that's the scenario that you're going to run into in this district. You're going to run into multiple great candidates. And I think that you're, you know, it'll probably, you're going to feel like you're going to be splitting hairs. That will be, that's what I predict will be the tough part.
That's a good problem.
It's a good problem, but it'll be like, we, we got two, you know, two or three great candidates. How do you pick?
Yeah, and I, I did have one question, maybe you answered that, so I apologize if you did, but how many districts are you working with that one time?
Right now, you'd be one. You know, could we work with more? Yes, it just hasn't come up yet. This hiring season, yeah. You're very early in the hiring season.
How many would you take potentially, then? Is there a limit?
There's three of us, I'd say two or three. And only, only because we don't want to split off that much. We have other people we could lean on in the H Y A group. There's some, some across the river, I'm looking the right way. Over there, then, you know, they're, they're, their home base, as far as where they live, is Illinois, and they'd be more than happy to help. But right now, we have one, and those three would be dedicated towards that. And we think that's an advantage for you.
The other question we had on here is top three qualities you consistently find most critical for superintendent success. How do you assess these qualities during the search process? And examples where they were pivotal, pivotal to a successful placement?
You go one, two, three, go ahead. Could you repeat that again? I want to, it was a preloaded question.
It is, it's long.
Three qualities you find most critical for superintendent success. And then, in your search process, include examples where you assess these qualities and found that they were pivotal to a successful placement.
And a lot of that goes back to, I was talking about different kinds of leadership and what your district needs. So to me, I'll throw out a couple that I think are really important. I think vision. I think, I think a superintendent has got to have vision and be able to look at the big picture and be able to say, how, how can I get everyone on board? If we're going to do a new initiative, how do I get everyone on board? So I would say another thing is your ability to develop relationships. Because everything we can talk about, we can have lots of data out there, right? This is still a very humanistic profession. And part, part of your evaluation, I think, when you, you, we talk about, boy, it gets to those top three, and they're all really good. Some of that, I would hope that you would be looking at is a humanistic fit with the board, with the community, with that. That, some of that, you might not be able to measure, it's human feel. And to me, I know that, that piece of it, I think, is really important, because it is a humanistic profession. And so many times, we want to, you know, this is where I have trouble with Iowa's report card, is, you know, they crunch all these numbers and blah, 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 and it's like, that's only part of the story, guys. That's only part of the story! And in education, it is that hu- humanistic piece. And I'll be, the third area I would throw out is the ethics of that, of that person. Because you are going to, that person's going to be, have to make some decisions. And their, what they truly believe in, and their ethical background, can they make the tough decisions that sometimes probably isn't a popular decision? But can they make the tough decision? And I think ethics, having a very ethical person running the district, I think, is to me, a thing that you need to be looking for.
I have a couple. Strength in financial awareness and understanding Iowa finances is crazy. I mean, it is. And one of the things that I had the pleasure of doing with this, like, is help teach new superintendents and S B Os school finance. And those are the things that keep everything going in terms of the resources that are available to do the kinds of things that needs to be done to bring that school district to the next level. But also with the interpersonal skills, being able to communicate well, communicate that is very understandable. I think there's a quote that Ben Franklin made to a friend. He wrote a letter to him and said, I apologize for the length of my letter, but I didn't have time to write a shorter one. And so, to be distinct and communicate well is important. And in the Bible, it says, for an individual to answer a matter before hearing is foolishness. So you need to be a good listener, that's a part of the communication. You're going to be orchestrating not only the finance of the district, but you're also going to be organizing the human resources. And so, to be able to move a district, the superintendent doesn't do it by themselves. They have to have the team working with him with a vision that is very clearly communicated.
I don't think I could add to that.
Alright, very good. We've got about five minutes left. Were there any other questions from the board? I guess, if you're the chosen firm, who is our, who is our point person? Who would be our point person?
I will be.
Did you have anything else you would like to share with us this evening?
Not necessarily. I think you've heard of everything there. And I really believe with that background, the national firm behind us references some supporting and access to individuals, you know, it's on our report there, that, you know, about two-thirds of the people we find applying for a search, we find. They're looking, but they weren't really putting their name out there too far, and we bring them here. And they match what you're looking for, not we just go find people. You know, we think that's important, that we have all that database of individuals. And we also, in that database, when they apply on frontline, we have access to not just their information, but there's a notes section that they don't get to see. So another firm might have wrote something, you know, hit the pick on it, but, you know, somebody might have wrote in there about Ian Roberts, you know, that did a Google search, took him out of my, you know, on this date or whatever. There's information, good or bad, in there on their notes that we can see that they can't. Their application materials in there, and those are the things you would see. So I think, I think, again, you would find our dedication to you, just, you know, A-plus, you know, and our commitment to you, same thing, and our partnership with you, staff, students, community. We, we want that focus group to be part of the support for the new individual when they're hired. And we tell them that at their training meeting. And we're looking for not only your input to the board, and the board gets to make that choice, but we're looking for you next to say, when you see that new person downtown or at an event, you know, hey, I was on the committee, how's everything going? You know, so you're, you're not just another face going by that they go, I gotta remember who that is, I gotta... They get some feedback, and you help them remember who that is, you support them. Somebody in the community says, what'd you think of that person? And you can tell them. So we, we put that, bring it all together for you, and make it a real smooth transition.
Thank you.
I guess I have one other question. Yeah, I've sat, I've spent, I've sat on several boards as well. One of the things that I've always appreciated is when you have a diversity of, of, of people vetting candidates, because people can get different, different, they can take different things and different viewpoints. As you mentioned, there was one time where there was, there was hard to make a decision, and people missed certain things, picked up on certain things that other people didn't. And one of the things that I was wondering is, do you think, how do you gain, I guess, a perspective of, let's say, females? You're all three males, right? When you interview candidates, do you have any person, like a female, who gives their perspective, I guess, as well, on your team? Or do you just present them to us and then have, you know, all of our board members, because they're both female and male, help vet those candidates out? I'm just wondering, from a, from a different perspective standpoint, how do you guys handle that situation?
I, I think, again, the information about each way is like forty-four percent of the individuals and associations are females. Company is owned by females. And so, on that page, we have our three faces, there was two ladies, there was one's the owner of the company. And one is the contact that if I have a question, it doesn't go to the owner yet, it goes to Danielle, you know? And, you know, and the other thing I'd say with a smile, I had three daughters before I had a son.
Two daughters.
So I think I, I don't want to say I know about females, but. No, I, I mean, we have that support there to do that, too. And right now, I, you know, and again, the number of searches that we've done together is, is not the total, like, H Y A, we're not involved in all of those. We've had about twenty-five percent be females appointed and about forty percent at the interviews. If that helps you any bit, that doesn't tell you we know females, but I mean, they're, they're in the pool.
Alright. Thank you very much for your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes. I am, I'm trying.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, I know.
Good to see you.
Really appreciate your honesty and coming. To your time and coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, that's so nice of you.
I saw that.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Do you want a bus down here?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Glad editor original, it's not what happened, so I just feel.
Thanks, guys, safe travels.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. I know.
So, my daughter's seated around. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Quick five-minute reset. I'll be able to finish that, and then we can go download her.
Okay. Sounds good, we're going to take a five-minute recess, guys, to finish our matrix, use the restroom, etc. God, you guys are fast.
Listen to much.
Alright, we're gonna, we're gonna open the meeting back up here. And uh, if everyone wants to go to their summary tab on the scoring matrix that we had, just as a reminder, uh, the first Understanding District Priorities and Candidate Assessment weighted the highest. And then Communication and Collaboration was the next highest. And then the Search Recruitment Process, Firm Experience and Qualifications and Finalization and Transition Support, the next three were all at that 10% weighting. So if we look at the scores for both firms, there is a clear choice. And I feel like this data objectively scores these firms. Did anyone want to discuss these right now? We have GLS at eighty-one point three and we have HYA at sixty-three point three.
So I just generically view them really differently. GLS is heavily relationship-based, it's heavily Iowa-based. And we'll get a different look with HYA, my viewpoint more of a national look that's more metric-based. So, you know, just there's a huge difference to me in the two approaches. The scoring is the scoring. I just, for me, actually, we had commented, you know, where do you, where do you want to live the next ten years or five years? And for me, we're already number one in the state of Iowa. I want us to progress to be notorious across the country. And so, part of me feels like we're gonna get more likely to be in that space with HYA looking nationally than we will from other folks in Iowa. That said, Iowa has, or, excuse me, Brian pointed out early on, most of the candidates don't need to live here if you want to hold on to it for long period of time. And so I can understand the desire to stick more with an Iowa-focused search. So I'm kind of of split brain here, but those are just like what my thoughts were after both the sets of interviews.
Yeah, yeah, both very professional, very good firms, but there are some, definitely some differences that were notable. Any other comments?
I think my assessment, I think that Doug's assessment is spot-on that, you know, we have to make a critical choice since we've had so many internal candidates. Is this a chance for, is this a time for us to consider getting somebody who, who could potentially take us from, you know, very good to great? I mean, will that person need to come from outside of this, this area? Because they are in other states that maybe seem to have that higher caliber, they're coming from a higher caliber of school and they have a perspective? Or do we want to really focus in on more like state-wide candidates? That's really sort of the question that we have to answer. But if we decide that we wanted to try and go from good to great, or from very good to great, then do we want to look at, at a firm that has more of a, a, a national candidate pool? The one thing that I did like about HYA is that we do have a local superintendent who is going to, or a, a, an ex-supervisor who knows our district. And so he would be able to at least bring some of that perspective even to national candidates if that's, if that's the route we went to. I am not so, I'm, I'm not sure, sure that GLS, if they know our district as well as, you know, HYA because of that one individual. But GLS seemed to have a lot more, they were definitely more relationship-based, for sure. So it's, it's, it's actually kind of a, it's a tough decision for me, I know.
Alright, so, does anyone have concerns that GLS would not bring as, as, uh, many candidates from a national perspective? Did you get that feeling that you did?
I just, I, I disagree in the sense that I don't think they spoke as specifically about their full recruiting strategy. They talked a lot about their networks and how networked they were and are. But that doesn't mean that they aren't going to recruit using any and all strategies that they have available to them through their website, through passive recruiting, through networking. So I don't necessarily agree that they aren't going to do it. I just don't think they displayed it in their presentation specifically.
They did have a slide on it. It's, which talked about the different, the different platforms they used.
He actually talked about, let's say sixty-something percent came from their site. Which was very Iowa-focused. That's why I had this generally, not necessarily national-focused, but I grew to Adrian, if possible, to have a few more of them, national search for.
I just didn't get the sense that they wouldn't recruit in Iowa, which is like what I'm here to say, so.
I guess we could tell them, you know, we want the search to be just state, but we would like to be national and we could tell them to focus on all candidates.
Well, and that's a good point, I guess, if we like everything else about them, but that is maybe a concern. Maybe that's something we need to communicate to them, that's very important to us, that they bring in more candidates, maybe put a little bit wider scope.
Yeah.
Normal searches.
Right.
Are there any strong concerns about HYA or?
I didn't get just like a, as much of a sense of confidence in the experience and in the just kind of overall first impression, in-person impression with them as I did with GLS. Like the, that kind of initial and first impression and vote of confidence in the presentation style and the communication style was stronger for me with GLS.
I liked that GLS had a network. I know that HYA has a network because they're tied to a national organization. But sometimes just because I feel like you're tied to that national organization doesn't mean you really have a collaborative communication. And it was hard for me to see if that collaborative communication was present or not between them and their, are they a franchise or are they really connected and communicating? Where GLS had a strong network of people helping them out? And I felt like they had a better, I liked their flow charts for how they would communicate with us and how the process would look from, you know, signing that contract to go with them, to all the person being hired was just more clear for me.
Leah, what, what, can you just, anything that, GLS, their, their price was like twenty-two thousand or something, right?
Yes.
What was HYA?
Their, their fee is eight percent of the outgoing superintendent salary.
So HYA is?
GLS.
GLS.
Yes, GLS is. Is that who you were asking?
And then what was HYA, the second question is asked?
HYA was eighteen thousand, but then they had some additional fees.
Their base fee is eighteen thousand and then if you want option A or option B for the background, that has an additional cost.
They make another trip or, you know, they have to make.
But that's for additional, so all of their in-person surveys, focus groups is all included in that eighteen thousand. If we want additional days on top of all of the ones that they listed, they do have an additional charge for that. But again, that's outside of all of the ones that they have listed within their RFP and their pre-interview questions.
And if the GLS has proposed search till twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty, that's, that includes a meeting and consultation, market consultation and mileage.
Yes, so for, are you talking to GLS or HYA?
GLS.
GLS, yes, so their consulting fee includes those things. Each of them have an additional cost for advertising. Each of them has an additional cost for candidate transportation or visit costs. So they each have some additional costs associated with it. GLS does include their background in it, but I don't believe it included certain key components, but we have a due diligence as a district to also do some of those checks. So I want us to be mindful of that, that all of those extra costs could be part of the district due diligence. And so there should be a balance within those things that, do we need an additional nineteen hundred dollars for A, Y, or Z if the district can conduct it for our costs, right? I do want to address Adrian, the, probably the clunkiness of maybe their presentation was, you know, they had a fifty-three slide deck that we tried to condense for them to give them the best opportunity for their fifteen minutes. So it, it still ended up being a little clunky unfortunately, but they did present a lot of information for you guys in that slide deck. Unfortunately, yes, it didn't, it didn't necessarily have the ability to show in their presentation because they were just trying to go off of three or four slides to give you their information. And Nikhil, I do want to remind you, as far as the criteria and the weighting, financial impact actually is the lowest of the metrics for what the rubric is going to address for us.
I, I think, you know, when it comes to, number one is how do we think we're going to get the best candidate possible? We'll find out when that group comes on board with us and they really take us through the process and you guys get a chance to give your feedback, directors get to give their feedback. I think a lot of them, what you'll see on both sides of it, you'll see a lot of Iowa candidates who will be interested in the position, just because of being a four-A school, larger district, I think there'll be a lot of internal information there. You know, there's pros and cons, we talked about before with the national and the, and the Iowa. Iowa is different. When you talk to superintendents, you'll hear that a, a lot of times when you talk to them about, there's just something unique about who we are and the, and the long-term stay. If we could find someone who could be here for eight, ten, twelve years, that would be a good thing. So it really comes down to which one you believe we will be able to give our most input to, that will do what we're looking for, find that next person that we believe can lead our district.
So maybe I could, it'd be easier for me to be on board with GLS if you answered this question. So districts of our size in the state of Iowa, we've been around well, seen some superintendents come and go. How many can you remember that actually came outs, from outside the state of Iowa that?
You know, I think, it's a really good question. I, probably a list of the ones I really come in contact to, handful plus.
So very small percentage, really.
Now, what I would say is you might see more from like a Wisconsin person coming to here because they have a connection. You know, they're here at some point or family member here. A Minnesota coming down, or you know, like the Midwest surrounding states, you'll see a lot of that. But for someone coming like from, uh, Texas to here, there really has to be a draw or a connection that would bring them here typically. Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Alright, any other discussion, otherwise I would take action.
I move the board to engage GLS to conduct a search for the next Pleasant Valley Community School District Superintendent.
Motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Kunkel, that the board move to engage GLS to conduct the search for the Pleasant Valley Community School District Superintendent. Roll call vote please.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wogley?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
And moving along to new vehicle purchase recommendations. Leland, thanks for hanging around.
Yeah, that's gonna be exciting.
I guess.
I'll just give you a little background, we actually have three box trucks in the district. So, one's a twenty-eighteen, it's got ninety-five thou, no, I'm sorry, a hundred and five thousand miles on it. And one's a twenty-thirteen, it's got a hundred and fifty-eight thousand miles on it. One's a two thousand eight, it's got a hundred and seventy thousand miles on it.
What kind of cars?
So they've got their, they've got, we've gotten our money's worth out of them. So, and we're looking to replace the one, the two thousand eight with a hundred and seventy thousand miles on it. We started having just a few issues with the food service. One's used for food service, one's used for daily deliveries. Actually, we started doing some tracking on them too. We do about fourteen stops a day. And we started adding the numbers up. So for like the first ten years early, I got like forty thousand stops. It's like a lot of going forward or reversing stop and stop and it's all in-town driving. So it's very hard up, it's all there. So, we're very happy with what we got, we're looking to replace exactly all the parts alike. The only difference is, we're going to, when they stop every time, if you go, I'm not sure how many people have ever seen them drive around, but they've got a big lift gate in the back. Whenever they have to do a delivery, they have to lower that lift gate, climb up in it, get whatever they're delivering and come back out and reverse it. These panel trucks will have a side door. So if he's got something small like a bag of laundry or just a box of mail, he can go right in the side door and there's two steps that take you up into the box. And then he can grab that and come back. Hopefully that improves his time, so he has more free time at the end of the day. And it's just less wear and tear on the lift gate and anything else, so that's good news. And the lift gate, once we're talking about the lift gates, the, the one that they have on them right now are only rated for two thousand pounds. This new one will be rated for three thousand pounds. And when you get a full pallet on it, it's hard for them to spin it around, they spin it around on the lift gate. This newer lift gate will be a foot longer. So it gives them a lot more safety. The right, when they, when they're spinning a pallet around on that lift gate, they're actually walking on the outside edge, which is scary, especially if that's two thousand pounds on that pallet, so. We'd like to keep the drivers and keep the food too on the lift. They spill once in a while to be honest, it's happened. So, so we, we did, we put it out for bid and we went for two instead of one. We put it out to five dealers. I called, I actually called every dealer, found out who actually handles it from, from their dealership, talked to most of them, got their emails, we, and we sent emails out to everyone with our, with our scope that we're looking for. We only heard back from Linkwist. So, but Linkwist has been very good to us over the years and I think that's part of it. Because they're right down the road, I think they cut, my personal, this is a personal feeling, that they actually really want to be the car dealer for us. Because they're right, they're right in the middle of the district. So I think the other dealers find it hard to compete, they just don't want to cut it that thin. But we have had other dealers in the past though, like the, one of the transit van, Sexton Ford provided a lot of them, so. So they do, once in a while they'll jump in, but a lot of times it's not uncommon for them not to jump in. So, the actual cargo van itself, it listed at like forty-six thousand really, and their price was about thirty-nine six, somewhere in that range. Because it comes in three pieces, you've got the actual vehicle itself, it's the actual cargo van truck, and it's a one-ton. And it has a seven-point-three-liter V-eight in it, so it's got, it's got a large gas engine. Then the box itself comes separately. And the lift gate comes separate too, so then they assemble the whole thing together. So, so the good news is, is it's relatively, we didn't add a whole lot of options to them, we kept them pretty bare and they're pretty close to what they had before. But we added a backup camera, all three of them right now don't have backup cameras on them, it's hard to, they'll have backup cameras on them, they have a backup beeper, they'll have the side door and stuff like that, so it'll be a nice vehicle. Sounds like rain.
Rain or wind?
The windows are open.
Posture.
Any questions?
Any questions for Leland?
Is that for sure the trade-in value? It seems low, I don't know anything about box trucks though. I just traded in my car and so I'm comparing it to that, but.
It's low.
I'm sure there's difference, I'm sure there's differences, small.
But you got to remember the one's got, the one's got a hundred and seventy thousand miles on it.
Have to pay for that one?
Paying to take it?
Yeah, and then you have to look at how old it is, because that's seventeen years old.
I mean, they have, they have done their day. They are ready for retirement.
If I have you take a look at the bottom side of the oldest one, it's only one color. It's rust from that.
Which one was in the shop all summer?
What's that?
Which one was in the shop all summer?
There's two of them in the shop.
I think, yeah. No, seriously, one was there all summer, right? They couldn't get to it or.
So.
Alright, if no further questions, I will take a motion.
I move the board accept the low bid from Linkwist Ford for the purchase of two F-350 box trucks with a net purchase price after trade-ins of one hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Second. Motion by Director Canwisher, second by Director Kunkel, that the board move to accept low bid from the Linkwist board for the purchase of two F-350 box trucks. Net, net purchase price after trade-ins, one hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. Roll call vote please.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wogley?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Thank you, Leland.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leland.
Moving on to resolution fixing date for a hearing on proposed issuance of the tax revenue bonds.
So at our last board meeting, when we talked about the Pleasant View and High School project, we talked about before, we can do the bids, we want to make sure we can secure the funds that we have to borrow. So what you see in your supporting materials are the four documents that really drive that work based upon Iowa Code four-twenty-three F-four-two, which requires us to have a public hearing on the proposed issuance of sale tax bonds. So that's a process we have to go through. After tonight, if we approve this process to keep moving forward in the newspaper, then we will put this information, it's going out for a public hearing on November tenth, so that people know, we're looking at borrowing twelve million five hundred thousand dollars, and that's the money we're asking for, for these two projects. And the, the bid will add, or the public hearing part will explain what alls are, you can see it in that document there. Once it goes out on November tenth, then we will do a public hearing that night, which that documentation is in your supplemental materials as well. If it comes back and we approve it that night, the next step in the process is, we have to wait fourteen days for someone to put a petition to not use those funds for that purpose. And if someone were to petition that, it would take three hundred, or sorry, nine-hundred-and-ninety-six votes, because it's thirty percent of your last election, which we had thirty, or three thousand, three hundred some votes at that point. So, we have to wait fourteen days, but then once those fourteen days are done, then we can move forward with the process, we know it's going to happen, that's why we put the bid date into that December for the Pleasant View project. And then you'll, we will basically, when it's all said and done with the process, it'll be in April when we will actually start using the bonds then to, they'll be in our bank account by that point. So what you see here tonight is our approval for a public hearing, and the second meeting of the public hearing would be on November tenth. But all the documents are in there, in our supporting materials, that is the resolution that we need tonight.
Do we have to have the meeting, do we have to have that meeting date in our motion or?
Uh, the November tenth date? No, no, tonight we're just doing that, because that'll be... No, I mean, we, I, if we want to be safe, we could definitely put it, we had it put in the past, Debbie, the date. Yeah.
But, yeah, you can go ahead and put it in if you'd like.
But a public hearing on November tenth, twenty-twenty-five.
I didn't know if that was.
That's, that's, everybody knows that. Yeah, yep.
Alright, are there any questions regarding this? Brian, you did a great job filling in the mic.
Thank you.
Alright, I'll take a motion.
I move that the board approve the resolution fixing the date for a public hearing on the proposed issuance of approximately twelve-point-five million dollars school infrastructure sales, service, services and use tax revenue bonds as presented. Second.
A motion by Director Wogley.
Second by Director Canwisher, that the board approve the resolution fixing date for a public hearing on November tenth, twenty-twenty-five, on the proposed issuance of approximately twelve-point-five million dollars school infrastructure sales services use tax revenue bonds as presented. Roll call vote please.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wogley?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Ayers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
The only thing I would add real quick, that just so you guys have for your own awareness, should we look at putting new tennis courts in for the district? Because we're going to maybe use our current tennis courts as the lay-down for the construction project? If we do that and we use these twelve-point-five million dollars for that, we will have to come back and do another public hearing, because you're using it for athletic complex. So we can still use the funds, but we have to come back and make sure we designate that's for that purpose. So that comes back at a later date, you know why.
Moving on to monthly financial reports.
If you look at the July financial reports, just the only one I want to share with you, it's rather straightforward, as Mike would always say. Under property taxes, on the first page, you'll note that we had not received any property taxes in July. Underneath state aid, you'll see there's a hundred and sixty thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars. I do want to point out to you that that money that came to us, that money will actually, it's called the Educational Support Personnel Safety Supplement, ESPSS. That money was given us to from the state, that'll be used for our par educators as a stipend at the end of the year. Should they work with us the entire year, we'll look at their, their attendance and we'll prorate accordingly, so they could receive approximately seven hundred dollars at the end of the year in a stipend if they were with us the entire year. So that one hundred and sixty thousand dollars will go towards our classified paristaff.
It's all classified, not just parists?
Correct, yes, classified staff, yes, thank you. Yeah, so stay tuned on that one, everybody want to point, that's why that money was there, otherwise everything is very straightforward in that one there. Unless you guys saw any questions. And then the August one, nothing to point out really, except that you see we start starting to receive a little bit of our property taxes, we got our first payment there in August of sixty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So property taxes are starting to come in now at this time, so. Everybody compared last year to this year, pretty comparable.
So the, I do have a question.
Yes.
July and August, state aid, you know, as of August is off by three hundred and eighty thousand compared to last, what's the scoop with that?
I don't know the answer for sure, but if I had to know Mike, Mike would probably say it's a timing issue as to when it's coming in. Yes. I can times I've heard him say that, if I can confirm that. That's all I have.
Any other questions? I was counting on you for a question.
Almost one.
I'll take a motion.
I move the board accept the monthly financial reports for July and August twenty-twenty-five as presented.
Again.
Motion by Director Kunkel, second by Director Wogley, that the board accept the monthly financial reports for July and August twenty-twenty-five as presented. Roll call vote please.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wogley? Mrs. Kunkel? Mr. Canwisher?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
And finally, moving on to old business, board policy revisions, series three hundred.
Just the final reading, unless there's any questions, it's just an approval tonight, it's all it is. There's a new motion.
Are there any questions? That'll take a motion.
I move the board approve new board policies three oh, three oh three point oh one dash E four, six, seven, eight, nine, and fifteen.
Second.
Motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Kunkel, that the board approve new board policies three oh three point zero one dash E four, six, seven, eight, nine, and fifteen. Roll call vote please.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wogley?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Alright, so with that... Alright, so uh with that, I just wanna say thank you for the extended time tonight, all of you. Um, appreciate uh your dedication to the superintendent process. It's gonna, it's going to be a marathon, so uh, you know, each step will uh, will present different challenges. But I uh, I really appreciate all of you and for what you've done and reading through stuff and dealing everything. And uh, and yeah, and thank you for uh helping get a lot of the data collected and putting things together. We will get a break now with bringing on the search firm. They will do the work for us. So uh, you can actually get your regular job done. But no, thanks, thanks to everyone. And um, our next meeting would, will be November tenth at six P M, a regular board meeting. And then the following one would be November twenty-fourth. Unless we have to get together before that.
Yeah.
Based on what the search firm would come back.
That's what I was gonna ask was, you know, now that we have the search firm, um, and maybe you don't know this. But um, I think it would be beneficial to get a little lay of the land over, like when we. Um, are we gonna be involved in deciding who the stakeholders are? Are we gonna be involved in that process? Uh, what, uh, what should our commitment look like between now and when it starts giving us candidates?
I think that that's what that initial meeting is for, Nikhil, is for them to truly understand how much involvement. Be able to really put that profile together for us to then give you the timeline that they're gonna see is gonna fit best for us.
Are we gonna wait until November tenth to do that meeting?
I, we could potentially have a work session.
Yeah.
If we did a work session, it could be anytime. It's still an open meeting. We don't have to stream it. We can just bring them in and we can sit down with them and just do work. I mean, anybody can still come to it, but I think that'd probably be the, we'll, we'll see if that's what they wanna recommend. And it can be any night, anytime. We've got to announce with, publish it.
I think that's just, the sooner they get that information, the sooner they start to, you know, we're dealing with. When you can be at the end of November, then you're dealing with holidays and everything you're supposed to see with that, so just kind of looking at.
Let us find out, let us find out tomorrow, when we reach out to the firm and see what their next step would be, but I think a work session might be the best.
And then maybe we can come up with several different ways, just kind of see what works for everyone. I think the most important thing is that we're all involved and we all have input. And when we have these work sessions, we're all here too.
Yeah. And as they were saying, several search firms have said already, this is probably the most, one of the most important decisions that we make as a board. So we have to, we wanna dedicate the time and commitment to it so that we make the right choice for our due diligence.
I just echo Molly's. Thank you for everything, for all you've done, all the reading, all looking through that. And Molly, thanks for your leadership.